Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is in fact being taped by FCTV. I'd like to start off by introducing members of the board, starting at my far right. To the audience's left is Jerry Potamus, who is an associate member. To his left, your right, is Frank Duffy, who is a full-voting member. Next to him is Mark Fineran, who is a full-voting member. My name is James Morse. I'm the chair of the zoning board. To my left is Suzanne Murphy, who is a full-voting member on the clerk. And at the other end is Scott Peterson, who is the vice chairman. Also joining us this evening is Noreen Stockman, who is the zoning administrator. And will Ashley be joining us this evening?
I'm going to watch you, Bert, while I'm waiting.
Excellent. The Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town's zoning bylaws and reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin a hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comment should be directed only at the project. Please refrain from making derogatory statements. They can include an opinion in favor or opposition or to ask a specific question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair, should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but is provided for the FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board shall discuss the proposal amongst themselves, then make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings or conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, a supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote of three to two is a failure to carry and will result in a denial. Any Zoning Board of Appeals decision may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 17. So we're taking things a little bit out of order this evening. We do have a full hearing schedule. We'll be beginning this meeting with open meeting agenda items. First up, we have to vote the minutes of October 27, 2022, November 3, 2022, November 17, 2022, and December 1, 2022. We will be tabling the minutes of December 8. Is everyone on the board an opportunity to read and review the minutes?
Yes.
Are there any comments or corrections that need to be made?
None.
Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'm going to discuss it, is there a second?
Second.
Give that to Mark. Any discussion on the motion?
I don't know.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, it is a vote. I'm going to wait for public comment. It's not, excuse me, it's not on the general 630. So next up, we have a request for insubstantial change, modifications to comprehensive permit number 63-20 at all Helma Circle LLC, Kendall Lane, lots 1, 26, 27, and 28, Falmouth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a heavy agenda. I did prepare a presentation that's five minutes, if you'd like me to do that.
Why?
Okay. This is the, for the record, I'm Laura Moynihan, the attorney for the applicant, Helma Circle LLC. Mr. Brian Keller here is with me tonight as well, who is the representative from the developer. And so this was, is a comprehensive permit. We filed the notice of project change for some lot line adjustments to Lot 1, 26, 27, and 28. We'd like to remove the common area from Lot 1 and make that its own, simply a house lot, so that the stormwater drainage system, the cluster mailbox, other utilities are maintained on a separate lot. There'll be a new setback for the Lot 1 to a lot line of about 32 feet. The new common area will be about 7,200 square feet, and that would be conveyed to the homeowners' association at the completion of the construction. So the idea there is rather than having these common area facilities on the homeowner's lot with easements, it's better to have it on a separate parcel. 26, 27, and 28, we're looking to shift the lot lines eastward towards Worcester Court about three feet, and there'll be a slight increase in lot area to 26 and 27, and a slight decrease in lot area to 28 as a result. And this is just really so that the houses fit appropriately on these lots. As for 26, it's a base Cape-style home. It does require some additional lot width of about six feet. And this, you know, is something that happens in a larger subdivision, once you start building, these little discrepancies come up in the process, that the lot width there is really not sufficient for the home. So we're looking to pick up another six feet. No changes to the front and rear setbacks. There'll be a slight increase on the side yard setbacks and lot coverage reduced. 27 is a two-story ranch-style home. No change to the front and rear setbacks, no change to the side or lot coverage. And 28 is the base Cape-style home. No change to front and rear setbacks. There'll be a decrease by three feet on the side yard on the east side and a decrease by three feet on the west side. Lot coverage will increase slightly by structure and overall, but none of these changes will impact the overall lot coverage approved under the subdivision. These lot sizes are still comparable to the other lots, as are the setbacks. As I said, minimal impacts on lot coverage. The changes, I think, are consistent with the approval. And the new common area for Lot 30, which is the stormwater drainage lot, would be a better situation for the HOA to control the common area utilities and facilities with owning that property. This is the plan that's in your file, so you can see from the plan in the orange is where the approved locations are, and then what has been proposed for the change in the lot lines. Again, it's really just a slight shift to the east to pick up some more lot area for one of the lots. And this is the Lot 1, the new lot, so it's just showing the home on the lot. Up in the top-left corner, you see the new lot line for that lot. And this is the mailbox plan that was approved fairly recently. In about the middle of that plan, you can see where the lot line is and the relationship of that cluster mailbox to the new lot line. So everything to the left would be the common area, Lot 30. This is the revised subdivision plan. Up in the top-right, you can see Lot 30, which would be its own lot, not a buildable lot, just common area of the subdivision. And then this is a blow-up of lots 26, 27, and 28. The lot sizes are all comparable, as I said, to others in the subdivision. And actually, Lot 28 is one of the larger lots in the subdivision at 6,031 square feet. So I would submit that the changes proposed are not the same or similar to those that are considered substantial, as a substantial change under the regulations. They have minor impacts and are similar to examples of insubstantial changes under the 40B regulations. There are no adverse impacts to the site or the neighborhood resulting, which is the Nantucket and Surfside test for an insubstantial change. And they're appropriate for administrative review as an insubstantial change. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Start with you, Jerry.
No questions.
Frank?
No, I have enough information, I think, on this.
Mark?
Looks pretty simple to me. I don't have any.
Yeah, good. No questions. No questions. For you, Noreen, do we need to make a finding that the request is insubstantial and then approve? Is that just a two-step motion, to be clear? Okay.
Do we need public comment?
Yes.
It's not a hearing, but...
No. Anyone public comment on this project or request?
Can you turn on the lights?
That I can't turn, no. The lights, I have no control over the lights, I'm sorry.
Some glasses. Well, they did before over there.
How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close. Yeah, that's where we're at, right?
All those in favor to close the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
I think we need to make a finding that it is insubstantial.
Insubstantial change.
Second. I'll give that to Frank, second to Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's a vote. And I need a motion to approve the changes as requested.
Second.
Second to Frank. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's a vote. Next on the agenda, we have a request for insubstantial change or modifications to comprehensive permit 44-90, Falmouth Housing Trust Incorporated, Esker Place, and Sam Turner Road, East Falmouth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Again, I'm Laura Moynihan, representing the Falmouth Housing Trust. And with me tonight is Karen Bissonette, the executive director, Addie Dilette, who is the president, and Brad Jethly, who works with Karen. And so we're here to ask you for another insubstantial change. This is a notice of project change under a 40B permit that was issued actually in 1990. And so here, we're looking to change the permit to construct four new homes, each with three bedrooms and two baths. All four homes would be affordable restricted units at 80% annual median income for eligible buyers. 1,551 square feet each, two stories, building height well under the 35-foot limit under the zoning bylaw. The lot areas range from 23,000 to 32,000 or so. About 100 feet of frontage on Sam Turner Road. Private septic systems and shared driveways would serve the homes. The site conditions, this is a 21.84-acre site, the Esker Place subdivision. As I said, it was approved originally in the 1990s. There's about five acres of building lots, 18 in total, and about 16 acres of open space for the subdivision. The area of the four new lots is naturally vegetated, and as you know, Sam Turner Road is an improved road. We're outside of the Water Resource Protection District, not in a Zone 2, not in a flood zone or wetland resource buffer area. The neighborhood conditions, it's an existing developed neighborhood, so this would be infill development. The lot size is larger or comparable to neighborhood lots. The approved density in 1990 was over an acre per unit for 20 homes. The existing density is about 53,000 square feet for the 18 homes that were built, and the density we're proposing is right around an acre, 43,000 to 43 square feet per unit for 22 homes. The open space that would remain is 14.14 acres, or 65% of the subdivision, so still a substantial amount of open space remaining. This is the GIS map, and you can see in the top portion that this is the Esker Place subdivision here with the existing 18 homes. This larger parcel is the existing open space. The new lots are proposed in this area off of Sam Turner Road as an extension of that subdivision. And you can see from this map that the other homes or lot sizes in the neighborhood are relatively similar to what we're proposing here. Access and traffic conditions, single-family dwellings typically add minimal traffic to the roadways, less than the local and regional standard of 25 peak-hour trips for traffic impacts. And we've also proposed shared driveways at the suggestion of the town engineering department to minimize curb cuts on Sam Turner Road. So this is just a colored-up plan that Mr. Martin's, who is also here as well, office, did for the housing trust, showing the four lots, the location of the homes, the driveway access off of Sam Turner Road, and the parking areas for each of the homes. And this is what would be the revised subdivision plan, showing on the right side the existing Esker Place lots, the remaining open space at the top, and to the left, the four new lots as they come in off of Sam Turner Road. These are the elevations for the homes. This was the same type of home that was approved on Lewis Neck Road, and so these are in your file. But I thought, rather than show you plans, we could show you what they will look like. These are the homes on Lewis Neck Road that were, have been recently completed by the housing trust, and happy to report that there are three new homeowners that have won these homes in the lottery, and we're hoping to close on these homes at the end of January. So good result there at Lewis Neck Road, but this is what the outside of the home for Sam Turner or Esker Place would look like. These are some interior shots. It's the same floor plan of the finished product, the kitchen. And here's the dining area and the slider to the backyard, stairs going upstairs. This is a first-floor bedroom area. This is a hallway going down to the first-floor bath and bedroom, second-floor bath, and the two bedrooms on the upstairs level. So the new homes at Esker Place would be identical to this. The lot coverage under the zoning bylaw, below the 20% required at under 5% per lot. Lot coverage overall, 12% or under, so well below 40% required. All the requirements for building setbacks, height, number of stories, parking, have all been met. The waivers under the zoning bylaw would be frontage waivers, a frontage waiver in the AGAA zoning district, 150 feet is required. We've provided 100 feet. And I've just given you examples of elsewhere in the zoning bylaw where frontage is permitted to be less for non-conforming lots. Minimum average width, 200 feet is required. We're providing 92 to 116 feet. Again, zoning bylaw does not have a minimum average width requirement for non-conforming lots. And the lot area required in the AGAA is 80,000 square feet, and we are obviously providing less than that. But the zoning bylaw does permit non-conforming lots at much less area in other districts and as low as 7,200 by special permit in all districts. 40B regulations for an insubstantial change. The regulations give an example that it can be deemed an insubstantial change if not more than 10% of the units originally approved are proposed. So the original approval was for 20 units. 18 units were built, so we're asking for four more units. So technically, we're asking for two additional units, which is not more than 10%. It is 10% of the 20, but not more than 10%. No adverse impacts to the site, the Esker Place subdivision, or the neighborhood. Feel it is appropriate for administrative review. We do recognize that it is four homes, but we do feel that the regulations recognize that this type of project change can and be processed efficiently without a public hearing and delays that result from that. And this request is an example of how such a project change that fits within the 40B regulations can provide four new affordable housing units within a relatively short period of time. The housing trust estimates they can complete these homes in about nine months from issuance of the building permit. So again, it's your decision if this change is substantial or insubstantial. I'm just giving you the guidelines under the regulations. And we are adding 10% more units than originally approved, but we're not adding more than 10%. So it can fit within that guidance of an insubstantial change under the 40B regulations. Also, as far as additional oversight, you might say, well, if we approve this, what happens next? Well, building permits are required from the building department. Septic system permits are still required from the health department because those are state requirements. Curb cut permits would be required from engineering, water service permits from the water department. And as part of that process of securing a building permit, the building permit application is circulated around to all the town departments, conservation assessors, as well as these other agencies for sign-off. So I give you that because you might say, well, we've maybe never done this before. Never approved four homes as an insubstantial change. But the point here is that it can be done, and it's an efficient way to allow for all restricted units to be added in a very quick time period. The project does support regional and local housing plans. These are the comprehensive, local comprehensive plan policy guidelines. You've seen these before, allowing for infill development, allowing for multiple housing opportunities. And these are the board of trustees, are the select board funding priorities, increased density, meeting the criteria of 80% AMI, providing three-bedroom homes, creating homes for first-time homebuyers, creates more affordable units than required under 40B. It's not a private developer that's only putting in 25% of the units. This is, all four will be affordable units, and continues to preserve the open space. The housing production plan goals, this was adopted in December of 2018, and again, this goes to the efficiency of the process as we're asking you to do. Because the housing production plan goal was 56 new ownership units by 2023, 28 of those to be three-bedroom units, and currently, we have 14 that have been built. And I've given you the list here that have actually been built. So we're far away from that goal. This would add another four units by 2023, and would go a long way to house four more people in a relatively quick period of time. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for the board? I'll start with this side.
Chairman, may I make a statement, please?
Certainly. Mr. Duffy.
I'm Frank Duffy, a member of the Board of Appeals. I'd just like to make a public disclosure that I am an officer and director of the Falmouth Housing Corporation, which is a nonprofit organization which builds affordable housing in Falmouth and performs the same function and mission as the Falmouth Housing Trust. I did seek advice from the State Ethics Commission, was advised to file a disclosure form with the Appointing Authority, the Board of Selectmen, and I have done so. I feel I'm able to participate in this matter fairly and objectively. Thank you.
Now, along those lines, I'll make a disclosure. I have done legal work for the Falmouth Housing Corporation, not the Falmouth Housing Trust. I have not filed a disclosure. This is a different entity, and I'm not on the Board of Directors, but I will put that out there just for the public, as a public disclosure. Questions from the board at this point? Start with you, Scott.
No, I appreciate the overview. That's very good. I like that we're working towards our comprehensive plan. I do agree with your overview on the insubstantial change, so I appreciate the information. I think it's a good project.
Ms. Lynn?
Couple of questions. How many of the 18 units have dropped off? Any of them? At the end of the...
None. Okay. None.
However...
Can I just speak to that one?
Sure.
Just quickly, very quickly. You just have to say your name for the record.
Karen Bissonette, Executive Director, Falmouth Housing Trust. None have dropped off. However, the first ones that were built out there 30, almost 30 years ago, they will drop off after 30 years. And I believe there are six of those because their comprehensive permits were different. They're written better now. They weren't written well back then, so they're going to drop off. So we will lose at least six houses by '29.
Still a loss of two.
Exactly.
And the HOA, you might want to stay up because I have a HOA question. The HOA, is it a working HOA?
They have a group, and they're supposed to be paying dues into that, but there is a president, and I know that when we did over Esker Place to Esker Place, before we could purchase that, the HOA dues had to be paid to them, so there are people still watching over that, so there is one, you know...
No one's watching over it.
Well, there are officers, and they do collect the money, so...
Well, when I went up there, it's in really bad shape. These four houses are going to go under the same HOA. It looked like a junkyard.
Well, I think it's a little bit better. I don't know when you've been there last...
Wednesday.
Okay, well, and that would be something that the zoning...
Well, it made it look a little worse.
I know.
But it says in the decision, two registered cars per unit. There had to be 10 junk cars. And that worries me.
More than a person should.
It is an avoidance.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
But we're going to put these four houses probably under the same HOA.
Yes, they would be under the same HOA. Well, and there are certainly, you know, ways to try and work or help the neighborhood. There is, I have dealt with some of the association people myself... There, there, I have dealt with some of the association people myself and doing some conveyancing out there because we have to get certificates of no assessments due, so...
Because it's only been in compliance.
Yeah, so, there are a set of covenants as well, but again, it, it is an enforcement issue and it's, I don't know how the neighbors feel about, you know, taking enforcement against other neighbors, but it's certainly something that could be looked at.
I just worry because with an insubstantial, we're not going to have an eye on it as well as we normally would have, and that's all, that's just a concern for me. It's all...
I have the same concerns, but, you know, the thing fits exactly in the 10%, and any unit is a good unit, almost, we certainly are, in my opinion.
Frank?
When I performed a site visit a couple of days ago, I noticed that the area immediately to the south of the last unit is a huge hole. How are you, how does that relate to what you're proposing? Are you working around that?
Dave Martin is here, he could comment on that.
Good evening, thank you for the record, David Martin, Tage Martin, Engineering. We are avoiding the hole.
Yeah, it looks like it, is it part of one of the lots you're proposing?
It, it is within the constraints of the property lines, but it's not within the constraints of the area that we intend to develop.
Okay, so this, these four units will actually be physically separated...
Exactly right.
From the first part of the, of the development.
Right, the physical structures will have a gap where the hole is.
It's just a depression.
It's never been so...
Any votes ready?
Yes, I do. In your application, which you submitted in letter form, you mentioned that the original comprehensive permit was passed permitting 20 units. And then, do I understand correctly, you came back and amended it by insubstantial change and reduced it to 18?
That's correct.
So, presently, the permitted number is 18?
That's correct.
Okay, so the number of 20 as our base point is kind of fictional?
Well, the, the 40B regulations that I can read, I can have the reference, specifically references what was originally approved. So, contemplating, I think that these permits could go back and forth, there could be an increase or a decrease, I, I can read you that reference if you like me to.
If you have it.
The app, if, this is under 760 CMR 5607 sub four, substantial changes to a project. It talks about if on appeal to the committee, the applicant wishes to make changes in its proposal from its content as originally presented to the board, the board should have an opportunity to review the changes that are substantial. And then they go on, this is a section that gives the example of substantial or insubstantial changes?
I have it right here, we have it.
Okay.
So, what you're saying then is we, we look to the original application, forget about the insubstantial change, reducing the number of units and just focus on the 20?
Correct. And I think the premise behind that is, on the original application, all the facets of what normally goes into a public hearing for 20 units, which was the original amount, is thoroughly vetted. And so, if somebody comes back and asks to increase from that point or decrease from that point, the new number is done administratively so that you could further administratively modify that. But I think it, you know, we had, we'd looked at that pretty carefully when we asked for the insubstantial change, if, if we felt it could fit within that regulations and, using the language originally presented to the board, I think confirms that it is the 20 units that were originally approved as part of that subdivision.
This, this project is, your proposed amendment is going to utilize some open space?
Correct.
Is this, who's responsible for this open space? Is it under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission or a nonprofit or a HOA? What's the story with the open space and who regulates it?
The Falmouth Housing Trust own, it's owned by the Falmouth Housing Trust. It was not, it, it was never put under any kind of regulation in terms of oversight by the 300 Committee or the Conservation Commission. It's been owned, owned by the Falmouth Housing Trust since the early 1990s and would continue to be owned by the Falmouth Housing Trust. And given the topography, the way it, it is out there, and Dave can talk about this a little bit more, but there, there is a large esker in the back, so, so it's not exactly flat area that people are sort of going in and out of, it's, it's pretty severe topography. And wooded, pretty much all wooded.
Okay.
So, it would stay in the ownership of the Housing Trust.
All right, then, no more questions.
These are full basements?
Yes, unfinished.
Is there any chance that the over dig could be put into that hole to lessen its impact and appearance?
Do you want to...
Yes, that possibility exists.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Possibly, I, I don't want to shoot from the hip here, but there will be, there'll be extra earth material and there's a hole there, so Preston and I don't see any reason why not.
Jerry, you have questions?
I guess I'm uncomfortable that you have a modified approval for 18, even though the originally approved was for 20. In my mind, I'm stuck on we have an approval for 18. I know what you're saying.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm uncomfortable with it, but I'd like to hear, and I heard your response, that these are the words in supposedly my reports, not yet, we have some wiggle room because of the wording of the regulations.
Right. And, and I think if there, if you think sort of about why the regulations may be set up that way, there are different reasons why a developer might come back for an administrative change like this, other than, you know, maybe they can't get financing for all the units at once, so they'll come in and ask for a modification to reduce the number of units. And then maybe they come back later and say, "Okay, we have the financing now, we want to go forward with more." And so, basing the, the base number on, on what was subsequently approved doesn't really make sense to me. It makes sense to me that it's based on the original approved number because that's where the project was completely vetted through a public hearing, where you had a full public hearing, you had this comprehensive permit issued for 20 units. So, when you're thinking about 20 units, that's what was vetted at that time, was 20 units. If that goes down later, you know, it, it does make sense to me that you're going to base the new number on, on the number of units that were subsequently modified administratively because there could be various reasons why that number went up and down. So, so I, you know, I think the, the main point is that it can fit within the regulations, obviously, it's your decision and within your discretion. And we're, you know, the Housing Trust is, is just trying to get these houses built as quickly as they can. So, this is an efficient way to do it. And we think that, given the, the level of oversight that goes into the building permit process itself and the Board of Health process with the engineering review and the Water Department review, that, that, that the town can be protected in this process for building a quality product and getting people housed in it within a year.
Thanks, sir. Mark?
Yes.
Had you come in prior to this looking for those other two units, it would have been no problem, in your opinion?
To go back to 20?
No, I mean, had you previously gone up to 20 prior to this, it would have been a dropkick, so to speak, and then we'd be just looking at two more units, 10%.
That's true, yeah.
So, I mean, you could have done this in two steps as opposed to one and there wouldn't be any problem, in my thinking, anyway, so...
Yeah.
I see no reason to deny this.
Do you have any administrative decisions or case law that support your mathematics in this case?
I, I did, I did look, the, you know, I couldn't find a, a specific case that dealt with an insubstantial change for the 10% exactly, you know, on the same fact pattern. But that's, doesn't mean it doesn't exist, it's just that these are all mass Housing Appeals Committee cases and they're not very well indexed. But, but, but I did, of course, find the Surside Crossing and Nantucket case, which is the most recent Housing Appeals Committee case that gives the standard for determination of substantiality under the, the regulations. And there, they said the changes proposed by the developer are to be examined with consideration to, quote, "The adverse impacts, if any, they could have on residents or on the surrounding area." So, that's technically the, the test from the Housing Appeals Committee, and that's why we've tried to show you at, at length what the neighborhood conditions are going to be like, rather than being able to show you that somebody in Boston said, "Yes, you can, you know, if you have not more than 10%, it's a slam dunk." Couldn't find that. And I, and I think it's because it is a discretionary call on your part based on that test, it's really looking at not so much the number, but are there adverse impacts on residents or on the surrounding area? It's a very broad discretionary test.
This project's going to eliminate conservation from going down there and taking a gander, I assume.
Now, the DNR in your second decision said no more touching of the open space.
Well, for, well, the, it, it's not going to eliminate conservation from going down and taking a look because the Conservation Commission has to sign off on the building permits. So, if the Conservation Commission somehow disagrees with us that there's a wetland resource area out there, that's when that's going to come up. And that would require then an order of conditions under the State Wetlands Protection Act, which would be a separate permit process, because we're still obligated to comply with, with the state permitting process. So, and what was this, I'm sorry for...
The DNR was commenting on the wildlife court mostly, I think.
Correct, right. So, so the original comprehensive permit basically has a condition in it that the open space would remain open space for conservation purposes. That's essentially what we're asking the board to modify. That's the condition of the approval, that this 16.56 acres be open space and, and preserved as conservation area. So, we're asking to take away some of that and leave about 14 and a half acres. If you think about it, the density on this project, when I gave you those numbers, I mean, you're, you're, you're looking at one unit per acre with all that, and it's wonderful to have all that open space. But that comprehensive permit was granted in a different time, and that was, I think, probably the first housing for sale development in the town and probably, I expect, very controversial in terms of approving it. And so, that very high density and all that open space, I think, was part of, you know, the process of securing that approval. But times have changed and, you know, using up open space is now, I think, more readily accepted if there's a balance between what you're, what's staying in place and what you still need for affordable housing. Because now, our need for affordable housing is critical. I'm not sure it was critical in 1990, but...
Actually, in the decision said they couldn't get people to apply.
Right, so it was a different, it was a different time, for sure. And I know that, you know, having done this for many years, the, the whole approval process for affordable housing has changed and the density has changed. And now, the town is approving, you know, more than four units per acre, which was sort of the practical standard forever, now it's, now it's much more than that even. So, so here, I think, if you look at it in that sense, that what's, what's being retained, well, it's 65% of the subdivision is still going to be open space, which is really a phenomenal number in today's affordable housing world, you know?
I just saw the DNR's letter in there in just one text, that's all.
Yes, and we asked him to go out there because of the deer corridor, we wanted to make sure Mr....
Martenson.
Martenson, thank you, Chuck, I was going to say, Mr. Martenson, Mr. Chuck, was satisfied with what was going on.
Thanks.
And he is, yeah.
Just one more quick question. One quick question. I actually remember when this was constructed and I knew somebody who purchased one of the original units. And I also remember that they had some problems with flooding and it took a couple of tries, but they finally alleviated that issue, not before some basements were filled with mud, I believe. I'm just wondering, is that hole part of the remediation for the water?
For the water, for the basements?
Yeah, there was, there was a substantial problem with water flowing in the backyards, flooding, and I'm just wondering if that was for excess or, just curious.
Clearly, I was not involved then, so I can't speak specifically to that, but I could suggest that the hole now functions to probably collect some runoff.
That's what holes do.
Well, I mean, I'm saying, if we fill it back in again, are we going to reintroduce the problem?
I don't think the amount of fill we would get, as you suggested earlier, from those four modest dwellings would come close to making a dent on filling that hole in. And I would, I mean, we, we would have to be very careful with construction costs, we're trying to, you know, get affordable housings out there with limited resources. So, typically, from an engineering point of view, we're trying to limit the area of disruption as much as possible and keep the site construction small, so...
One would think keeping it onsite rather than trucking it off would be cheaper.
Yes, and we would do that and we'd probably stop there, rather than going further with filling a hole that wasn't going to benefit us.
Okay, well, I'm not suggesting I was...
Okay, yeah.
Invite the public, does anyone like to make any public comments regarding this request? Seeing none. How would the board like to proceed?
Make a motion to close.
Motion to close, Mrs. Zane, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Scott, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Board, I have a little discussion about this before we vote up or down?
I'll start off. I think I was convinced that we should, that this qualifies for insubstantial change. Some of the issues seem to be enforcement issues that are well beyond this board's ability to enforce or control, so going for another public hearing? Well, one, I don't think it's, I think it's an insubstantial change, I'll just leave it at that. It meets the criteria.
Frank?
I think it's an insubstantial change also, although I'm not really all that excited about carving out from the open space, but I think on balance and the purpose of more affordable housing in, in Falmouth, I would vote for insubstantial change.
Mark?
Same thing, I feel it's necessary and not extreme in any case, and I would vote.
Agreed, the need is higher, agreed.
Motion to approve an insubstantial change?
Second.
If I can amend it, that one in the board finds it's an insubstantial change and then approves as requested, is that the motion?
Yes, so moved, and second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, that's a vote.
Thank you very much and, and really appreciate that you've met early to deal with these matters, too. Thank you for your time.
Next up on the open meeting agenda, we have board discussion regarding staking policy, lot coverage and bulk calculation, the vote anticipated. Given that we're...
I didn't download the agenda, but this was on for the 21st and I was unaware of this until, so, just today, actually, and I suggest we put it off.
My suggestion was going to be that we put it off to a Saturday meeting where we can...
That would be even better.
We're not having a robust...
We're not getting into our regular agenda.
Yes, exactly.
Like, make a suggestion, we say policy change. Do we mean guidance? Policy change requires a couple more steps, public hearings and things like that, if I remember our procedures. And Norine could look into, I mean, if we formally make this a policy or it's a, a guidance.
There's policies and then there's rules and regulations, so we've got to decide what we're doing.
Regardless, I don't think we want to take this up tonight.
Oh, yeah, no.
So, I suggest we postpone this to, we'd properly notice at a later time.
Yep. Agreed.
Next up, we have board updates. Norine, anything for us?
Nope.
On this side? Board discussion? Board discussion?
Nothing.
Future agenda items, other than taking up what was discussed in number four at a later time. Norine? All right, well, that will conclude the open meeting portion of tonight's zoning board. First up, we have public comment. If the public would care to make any comments about anything that is not specifically on tonight's agenda, we'll invite you up to the microphone at this time to do so. Does anyone have any comments about anything that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Next up, we have continuations of hearings. First up is hearing 80-22 Deveraux, 15 Peace Pipe Road, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow an in-ground pool increasing lot coverage by structures.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Bob Ament, Falmouth attorney. I represent the applicants, the Deveraux's. At the hearing on November 17, we presented the plans. I have them, if you want to see them again, which we can put on the screen. But this is a fairly simple case, or it seemed to be so. It's a request for allowing lot coverage to increase to 23.5 percent by the addition of a 14-by-22-foot swimming pool, a small swimming pool, in the backyard of the subject property on Peace Pipe Road. The property backs up on the bike path. The neighbors to the side are well screened from the site. The area where the swimming pool will be installed is a, is a grassy area. The criteria for a special permit for lot coverage were well met. Obviously, a small swimming pool doesn't have any effect on shadow of neighboring properties. There would be no impact on views or vistas. This particular area is not in a Water Resource Protection District, nor in a coastal pond overlay district. And there'd be no impact from a swimming pool on coastal abeyments. So it would seem to be a relatively straightforward application, but a couple of problems came up at that hearing were mentioned. One, the staking wasn't properly completed. That is, the lot corners were not staked, although the swimming pool location was. So we had that done and submitted photographs of the staked lot corners to the board. There was also discussion about the fact that a small addition to the house, actually, it was part of the original construction, was constructed not in accordance with the original approval. The seasonal enclosed porch has windows in it, and the permit provided that it would not have heat or insulation or windows. Well, it doesn't have heat, doesn't have insulation. It is on sonotubes with a gravel underneath it. It was built as part of the original construction, and a occupancy permit was issued, that is, the building permit was closed. And the reason it was done that way with an administrative approval back in 2014 was simply to avoid the need to get a special permit at the time, because the zoning administrator can approve seasonal rooms that are not heated or insulated. The administrative approval process actually doesn't say anything about not having windows, but the decision did. So there was an error that the owners weren't aware of. They thought that building that seasonal room was fine. But the zoning administrator had a wonderful suggestion at the last hearing on November 17. She said, why don't you just amend your application for a special permit in order to get that addition approved? Obviously, the, whether that's seasonal or not, and it remains seasonal, doesn't have anything to do with the lot coverage, which is the issue that's before the, the board. But by making it seasonal, intended not to have windows, a special permit was not obtained in 2014. But now we'd be obtaining it with the amended application, which I filed on December 6. The other issue that came up was there was a request that we submit information about the wetlock product, that is, the jointing material that is between the pavers on patios and some of the driveway. And the building commissioner can consider that a pervious surface. That doesn't, also doesn't relate at all to the issue before the board, which is lot coverage by structure. It does relate to how much total lot coverage there is, because if it's not pervious, then the lot coverage would be a tiny bit, 153 square feet more than the 40 percent that's allowed by right. That's a building commissioner's decision under the language of the bylaw as to pervious materials. So I think with the submissions that were made on December 6, I addressed the concerns that the board brought up at its November 17 meeting. I continue to think that this should be a relatively simple case. We heard letters from neighbors in support. There's nobody who's opposed to it. And I'm happy to try to answer your questions.
Questions in the board, Jerry?
No questions.
Frank?
No, I'm satisfied.
Mark?
None.
What's going to be the final percentage of structures, paving, and parking?
Well, I can tell you, as I just said, that it's 153 square feet more than 40 percent. And exactly what that figure is, I think it might, well, that's, first of all, if, if that product makes all of those, the patio and so on pervious, then I, I believe that there may be no parking or paving, or paving on the site. I'm not sure about that, but I think that's right, because the required parking is in a, in a enclosed garage. And that may be what the plot plan, which you have before you, says.
Yeah, it just doesn't say, that's why I asked, okay, thank you.
Scott?
I wasn't here for the original, so I'll defer to the board.
Any follow-up questions? Public comment, if any? How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close?
Motion closed by Jerry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Discussion?
I'm all set.
How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve?
Motion approved. Suzanne, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark.
So what are we actually approving? Are we approving the amended application for the enclosed porch? And the application for the special permit for the in-ground pool?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Findings?
Findings, we're in a RB district, no flood zone, no overlay. There was that previous decision in 14 for a screened porch. Lot size is 21,184. It's on a private road. Existing, we have, I just put it away. Existing, right now by structure, is 22.0, and by structure, paving and parking is 23.5. And the applicant just indicated that it's not going to go up. We have three letters in approval. I think it's a 240/6090 and a 243. I think that's all I have.
By the applicant's, you have a 22-by-14 pool, correcting a previous zoning issue, amended complaint. No opposition appearing. No opposition filed.
Three letters of support.
Three letters of support. Conditions?
Porch remains three season.
Per plans, comply with Building Department pool regulations, standard hours of work. Norine, anything else in terms of conditions?
I guess the only question on behalf of the board is determined that load lock coverage exceeds 40 percent. 40 percent is the limit of the bylaw. So if, if that pervious for the wetlock area, I guess that's the question, is whether...
I'll defer to the building inspector. If he's making a determination that it's pervious and it's not going to trigger the 40 percent, if not, we're going to have to come back and make some adjustments.
Put that right in then, as a condition, yep.
And there was indication that they spoke with the person who constructed it and said there was sand underneath it. So it should operate as the...
Applicant's testified.
As the applicant testified, and the literature testified. So it shouldn't be an issue.
Offense, Frank?
And then no further lot, no further structure extensions absent prior approval.
Approval or reduction, something else. Technically, you voted it, but we'll just do one more time. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed, that's a vote.
Thank you.
Next up, we have application 59-22 O'Boyle, One Lookout Avenue, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove a portion of the existing dwelling, remove and rebuild the roof over a portion of the dwelling, adding a one-half story, and rebuild the rear dwelling, adding a second story addition.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, I'm Laura Moynihan, Falmouth attorney, representing the applicant. This is a continued hearing. I know you have a very long schedule, so I'm not really going to say anything more than we filed revised plans with the board. We filed the comparison elevations as requested, showing existing and proposed. We've maintained that the one-story rear portion will be constructed at the same elevation as is existing, and that's shown on the plan. We've had this, our surveyor, Mr. Bunker, measure the base elevation. Mr. Martin, who is working for the Abutter Walsh, has confirmed same elevations. So I think those two gentlemen are on the same page about the elevations. We have, we are agreeable to a certification from BSS Design as to the framing height of that one story, and a second certification as to the final height once the roofing material is added on, to try and assure the neighbors that the height will not be greater than what it is now to the ridge of that L. You asked for our architect to certify as to the half-story square footage of the top half-story being in compliance with the zoning bylaw, being 50 percent or less than the second story. You have that in your file. We filed a letter from the contractor confirming that all work would be done, could be done, and would be done within the property lines of the applicant's property. So with that, I think we've tried to do everything we can to satisfy the neighbors and hope that the board members are satisfied. We are asking for the special permit approval tonight, if possible. And just wanted to quickly remind you of the project benefits, because you'll be looking at that improvement to the aging exterior, improvement to the historic character, cleaning up of the series of poor additions. The front porch area will be modified to enhance the neighborhood views. The aging shed at the rear of the property will be improved to improve the site view to the ocean from the neighborhood. The front step encroachment into Lookout Avenue will be removed. New stormwater management will be installed with new gutter systems and leaching chamber to eliminate runoff. The outdated water service will be replaced, lot coverage will be reduced. The rear structure non-conforming setback will be eliminated. No increase in bedrooms proposed. Building height will conform to zoning, and this family will be able to house a handicapped member with a main floor bedroom, which is important to them. And the rear portion of the dwelling will be reconstructed at the same ridge height as the existing, with the added benefit of a modified hip roof, and one foot less width to open up that view from Bellevue Avenue. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Four questions, we'll start with you, Jerry.
No questions at this time.
Frank?
No.
I'm happy that we have preserved the views and vistas of the Walshes in the other neighborhood, and acknowledge that they have that right. But as far as the main body of the house, and I go back to something that I have experienced with my own personal property, and it has the same lot coverage as this one, 40 percent. And I was told that there was no way that I could add habitable space, which is what will happen if you raise the roof on the main portion of the house. So I, sorry, I'm against this.
Any questions? Suzanne?
I'd like to hear from the other attorneys.
Yeah.
Could I just respond to that very quickly? There's no prohibition in the bylaw from adding habitable space if you do it by special permit. If you're trying to do a by right addition and add habitable space, then the building commissioner can say, you can't do this without a special permit. But this board sees applications all the time where people are adding habitable space. They're adding additions. They're adding second stories on one-story homes. I mean, I myself have done many of those applications. So I, I think, I would guess I would just urge you to think about that. Where is the prohibition in the zoning bylaw from adding habitable space? If you're talking about increasing the non-conforming nature of the structure with the height elevation, which is an issue...
As well, yes.
That we've gone round and round on. I acknowledge that you feel that way, but that doesn't mean you can't approve it. It just means that that's your opinion, and the bylaw gives you the avenue to do that. So, again, you know, we do have these aging buildings in Falmouth. We, we've tried to do everything we possibly can to reduce the lot coverage. Yes, they do want more habitable space on the top story, but that, I don't think, is a detriment, and certainly isn't substantially detrimental, which is really the test. So I would urge you to rethink that, and, and, you know, the O'Boyle's have gone to tremendous lengths here to work with the neighbors, and really would, would hope that, you know, you would recognize that and, and allow them to reconstruct this home. Thank you.
In response to that, it's an extension of the non-conformity, as you stated. And further, as I stated before, and as is the case with a property that I own, it is 60 percent, we had this argument before, it is 60 percent over the allowable maximum. It's maybe only be 15 percent of the lot coverage, but lot coverage is 25 percent, and 15 times four is 60. I mean, there comes a point when what you see is what you get. And I think that is absolutely the reason the bylaws were constructed in this fashion. And...
True, but you have to keep in mind, there is a half-story there already. And the increase in the height is one foot 11 inches on that main portion of the dwelling. I'm not, I know Mr. Chairman is looking at me like, don't argue, but...
I'm going to move this along to public comment.
Okay, but, but that is important. It's one foot 11 inches higher, and there is space up there already that is usable and is habitable. It just hasn't been renovated yet.
Well, why?
I'm going to move this along to public comment. Counsel, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Megan Hall from Moriarty Troy Malloy, on behalf of...
Megan Hall from Moriarty Troy Malloy on behalf of the Zawadas. At this point, we've seen numerous iterations of these plans, which unfortunately has caused my clients to incur substantial expense in having to respond to all of this, to get to a point that perhaps we could have gotten to at the outset. So at this point, after review and consideration, especially with the recent elevation plans that we have received, my clients, the Zawadas, are in agreement with the plans as they have been proposed, the most recent revisions to those plans. But we would ask that certain conditions be imposed with the special permit, if it is to be granted, which I believe my sister here has indicated in her papers as well, is that, one, that the ridge height of the rear L will remain at the same height as it currently exists, and there'll be no increase, as well as there'll be no increase in the elevation height upon reconstruction of that rear L as well. And lastly, that there be a condition imposed that the applicants are not allowed to enter upon any of, on any of the Abutter properties in the process of reconstruction of their project. So with that being said, our clients as well would like to move this forward to a vote at this point, and thank you for your time and efforts on this.
Thank you. Kirk, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board. Edward Kirk for Catherine Walsh, the Abutter at sixteen Crown. There's been a lot of material exchanged and submitted in the last, really since, in the last four days, since December thirtieth, and there's been some productive communication between David Martin on behalf of my client, Tom Bunker, on behalf of the O'Boys, in order to try to get the numbers right with respect to achieving the objective, which is to assure that there'll be no increase in the height of the ridge, which the O'Boys have agreed upon. So I think we've come to that conclusion. And there's, I have a letter that I've submitted on January fourth, and provided that the facts and conditions that we've outlined in that letter are incorporated into the board's decision. We don't have any further objection. And if it's okay with the board, what we'd like to do, just to make sure we have all our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, is before the decision is signed, but perhaps before, after it's drafted, maybe Norine could send a copy of the draft to myself and to Laura so that we can make sure that everything that we've agreed upon is in the decision of the board, so that there's clarity going forward. And that, those are the only comments I have, and thank you for your time and consideration of this matter. Thank you.
Other public comment? We have a follow-up question for Ms. Moynihan. Regarding the letter Attorney Kirk submitted on one-four, would you view the applicant be in agreement as to the conditions that are outlined in that letter?
Yes.
Be incorporated in the decision?
Yes.
And do you have the objection if we have the zoning administrator draft a positive decision for review?
No objection at all. I had reviewed that letter. Mr. Kirk gave me the courtesy of reviewing it in advance, so no objection to it. Yeah.
I'll just say, usually these decisions, they get much easier when the parties work together and come to consensus. So I realize that there was an expense to this, but thank you. Makes the decision-making from me, anyway, much easier. Any other public comment?
My name is Diana Moda, and I live in East Falmouth. I just wanted to basically back up what Mark said. We have bylaws and the certain laws, we're supposed to follow them. And why should they be able to do what they want, but then he has a hard time doing the way he has to do? I mean, what's fair is fair. That's just how I feel about it, you know? It's not that I don't think it's personal, but it's just, you've got to do for one, do for all, or none, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Would the board like to proceed? Motion to close? Motion to close?
Seconded.
Seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Would the board like to proceed? Discussion, or are we prepared to entertain a motion?
I'm prepared.
I guess just a comment. As you pointed out, Chairman, I think that it is nice to see that the parties did work this out over a long period of time. Mr. Finer is absolutely right. We struggle with every one of these, where there's difficulties in increasing of ridge height, and especially where these houses are, you know, the proximity is so close to the Abutters. Might not have these same issues if it's in the center part of a fairly large lot, but these are small lots in old neighborhoods, and it is becoming increasingly difficult to look at these and say that there's precedence in any fashion. These are all special permits that have to be looked at on an individual basis. So I am happy that the attorneys got together with their clients and seem to have work to an end on this, so...
My reservations were addressed with the revised plan, seeing that there was not going to be any ridge height, and then I was very happy to see that both the significant objections were essentially have been dealt with, and the neighborhood is now in agreement with certain conditions. So I'm, I will be in favor of this. Mark?
Nothing further.
Frank, I know you're not voting on this because you weren't there, but do you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, I don't.
Jerry?
I'm in favor for all the reasons other people have said. I concur with them.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Conditions? Is there a second?
How so?
Seconded by Jerry. Findings?
For plans?
Do we not, do we not vote?
Findings, we'll vote at the end. Findings?
Findings. It's in an RC zone. No overlay, no flood. It did have one previous zoning special permit in ninety-three. Lot size is forty-seven sixty-nine. It's on a public road. Existing structure is forty-point-four, and I may be off on this though, Laura, because of the change, I don't, I mean, I have, I think it's pretty close. Existing structure forty-point-four, total is forty-seven-point-twenty-six. Proposal is structure thirty-nine-point-oh-four, in total is forty-five-point-eight-three.
I can just stop you for one second, just to make an amendment to the motion. This will be to have the zoning administrator draft a positive decision, subject to a final vote. If that's agreeable?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's a two forty-three C and a two forty-sixty-nine. Ten letters in opposition and in support.
Just to indicate that several of that opposition was represented by counsel, and they're now in favor of the revised plans.
In favor, with conditions.
With conditions.
Right. I think that's all I have here.
Do we make a finding that there is no, oh no, I guess there was some objection. I take that back.
Yeah.
Yeah, so what I...
That's what he just did.
At the initial hearing, it was said there were, it was reservation and objecting to the project, and that plans have been revised. I didn't see any deceiving, but...
There was one objection.
Two Abutters, two council made objections. The parties have worked together. Just reference the procedural history, Norine, in terms of the revision of plans. Can incorporate the letter from Mr. Kirk with the decision?
Construction?
Not more, well, those will be for conditions instead of findings. Not more detrimental? Conditions?
Hamad has affirmed a finding that there is a right to, acknowledge a right to views and vistas?
We can, no.
I disagree with that.
I would disagree. I mean, we can, in the...
Certainly appears that way.
Well, I would suggest that the approval, if approved, if the vote is approved, that we would consider the impact on neighborhood views and vistas, and we're not finding it more detrimental, given that the bridge height, well, personally, given that the bridge height's not going up. It's essentially the same height.
And because?
It's been revised.
Yeah, well, because we obviously agree that they have a right to a view and a vista.
Well, no impact.
Existing, yeah.
This board, I think, has ever said that there's a right to a private view and vista.
The parties have an agreement here that they've brought in.
Correct.
We're incorporating that into the decision.
Right, yes.
It's not an affirmation of private right of view over a public property.
Conditions? Per plans, I think we should incorporate the conditions that the parties have negotiated.
Did they negotiate, no construction in a public way? Last, when Jenny mentioned that. It wasn't in Mr. Kirk's letter, but...
So what was stated was that the encroachment, they were going through the new and small portion of the encroachment.
No, it was construction, that all construction would have...
Construction is also takes place on the subject's lot and...
You've got it. Thank you.
Standard hours of work. If they have to get into the public roadway, just have them work with the Falmouth police, just to make sure that they're not obstructing streets or causing any dangerous conditions. Any referrals incorporated into the decision? Anything else?
One of the lawyers said no entering the property.
That's what we just discussed, she's got that.
Okay, that was it, okay. Got it.
Materials and vehicles, construction materials and vehicles?
On lot or just if they, it's a tight neighborhood. I don't want to completely hamstring, but if the fire chief and the police chief say that's fine, that's fine.
They can obstruct.
Let them work with the police department. Yep.
No other structures on the, I don't know if they can fit me. No other structures on the site?
We can always, if you'd be, tailor the decision.
Okay.
Any other discussion or conditions?
Conditions of Mr. Kirk's.
Yes.
Yeah, we got that.
So I would propose that we would have the draft for your next meeting on January nineteenth. We can circulate to all council in advance.
If there's anything that they feel strongly are need to have revised, we would just ask that be brought in as early as possible, so that we can review and determine if we accept it or not. Do we need to vote at this time, Norine, or not?
I think we should wait for the draft.
Well, I think you're going to wait and vote when the draft is completed.
We'll have that due before the nineteenth. To the parties, thank you for ironing out this disagreement. We'll see you back on the nineteenth.
All right, moving along here.
Next up is hearing five seven dash two-two, Hanley, two thirty-seven Old Main, North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow conversion of the existing dwelling into four dwelling units, construct four additions and a detached four-car garage. On this, it's myself, Scott, Suzanne, Mark, and Jerry.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Good evening, Mr. Flower.
Thank you for having us again tonight. I am here representing Brad Hanley and Eric McLaughlin, who are now the owners of two thirty-seven Old Main. They recently completed their purchase of the property. Much like Attorney Moynihan, I have no intention of taking more of the board's time than is necessary. The board has heard this matter on a number of occasions, and there's a full agenda this evening. As you know, we're seeking approval for conversion of the existing ten-bedroom dwelling into four condominium units pursuant to two forty twenty-three B. We have received approval, site plan review approval from the planning board, as well as a certificate appropriateness from historical. I apologize, my voice is a little shot today. Too much cheering for the bowl games. At the last meeting, the board asked if we would consider compromising and adjusting the number of bedrooms, which we did do. We agreed to reduce the proposed bedroom count from ten down to eight. Those revised plans were submitted to the board. I think it's important to note, our position remains the same, that there are ten existing bedrooms. However, we're willing to reduce the proposed number of bedrooms in hopes of moving this matter forward. Otherwise, there's no changes to the plans, site, or architectural. This proposal will rehabilitate an existing dilapidated dwelling, provide a new Title V wastewater system, and have in addition of a detached four-car garage at the rear of the lot, will comply with all setback requirements, lot coverage requirements. It's a good use of the existing development. It rehabilitates a historical, once beautiful home, and provides additional housing via infill rather than new development. I believe that this project meets all the criteria for a special permit under two forty twenty-three B, two forty twenty-three G one, and two forty two sixteen. I believe we've addressed all the other questions at the last hearings, but I'd be happy to speak to any questions the board might have now.
Start with you, Scott.
Attorney Flower, good evening. Are you going to redo the septic design for eight bedrooms?
I mean, I suppose we could. I think I'd rather have an overdesigned septic than an underdesigned septic. That's something I'd have to discuss with the clients. I don't think it has a ton of bearing on the overall design of the project.
No, I agree. I prefer to see the ten. I just don't want ten in the future.
No, I mean, you know, the special permit decision's going to dictate the number of bedrooms that we're allowed to have.
Yep, I agree.
That'll sort of as a restriction on the property.
Thank you.
Mark?
Using your own words from the last meeting and prior to that, as to the bedroom count, you used the preponderance of evidence. And the preponderance of evidence still remains that there were only six bedrooms on that property. And further, well, so I don't think eight is acceptable, and this compromise at eight, so to speak, could lead to presenting exactly the same plans you have, just taking two of the existing bedrooms and putting a four-foot opening and calling them offices, and then we're back up to ten again. I believe the preponderance of the evidence is that there were only six bedrooms there, certainly not ten. And, I mean, we have to craft these decisions with the bylaws as written. And just an aside to that, I think that that nineteen eighty date should be removed. As a matter of fact, I'm contemplating a town meeting article to do just that, because it's, it's a bridge too far, if you like, and I certainly agree with that. But I don't agree with the eight bedrooms. I certainly am for neighborhood input. I think we just saw what positive results we can achieve when everyone works together. But I see no evidence that there were ten or eight bedrooms there. I mean, we have six. And I mean, you know, these are the zoning bylaws. I mean, this isn't Stretch Armstrong. I mean, I just don't see ten or even eight bedrooms there. And I mean, I have familiarity. I've worked on that house. I've been inside and out numerous times in its original state. That's just how I feel and how I'd apply the bylaws as written.
Any other questions? Frank, do you have any questions?
No.
Jerry?
Nope, I'm satisfied.
Public comment?
My name is Tony Petrucci, Director, bought at two forty-three Old Main Road, and thank you. Let me say this first, because I always forget to say it. I think it's a wonderful design. I think they've done a great job in designing it. I think the issue before all of us here is what is the definition of an existing bedroom? Now, for some reason, Title V has been used to define an existing bedroom. Now, what was the frame of reference when the authors wrote this bylaw? It certainly was not Title V. That didn't come into play till nineteen ninety-five. Why not pick the Universal Building Code, which describes it the same way? That was two thousand. So what was the frame of reference that the authors of this bylaw... So what was the frame of reference that the authors of this bylaw used to define an existing bedroom, whether it be 1980 or not? So that's the only issue. Other than that, if, if you find that eight bedrooms is what you need to do, or if it's six, we think it's a wonderful design, but we think bylaws need to be adhered to, but we think it's a wonderful design. So that's all I have to say about it, it's a definitional issue that exists, you didn't change it during the recodification process, so it remains a little bit obscure at this point in time, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other public comment?
I do have one point that perhaps Mr. Clower could address, that appeared on the revised plans, that the office, the two offices that were created still retain doors?
I'd be happy to condition that as a four-foot cased opening.
I'd like to see the closets removed, too.
Closets actually have no play in a bedroom definition, but that's...
I'd like to see the closets removed.
Definitely.
I would just say, you know, my office at home, I have a closet, and it comes in very handy, but I would, I'll definitely discuss that with my clients, and I don't think that would be a hurdle towards approval.
Mr. Clower, I just want to follow up, I'm going through my notes from original hearing back in October, your definition originally was 10 bedrooms, and that was based on Title V definition?
Based on Title V definition, our engineer did a walk-through of the property prior to the damage with the health inspector, who confirmed that in his opinion there were 10 bedrooms in the house. As I discussed at the last hearing, the testimony from some of the abutters was that there were seven actual bedrooms, however, whether or not a room is used as a bedroom doesn't mean that it doesn't meet the definition of a bedroom. And, you know, we, I set forth on the plans that were provided by the abutters, at least 10 rooms that met that definition of bedrooms. Now, again, we're happy to reduce our proposed bedroom count, that's not, that is not necessarily to say that we think there's only eight, but we're happy to reduce it to eight in, in hopes of reaching a compromise and moving this matter forward.
Any other follow-up questions? Would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close?
Motion to close with Suzanne, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Hearing is closed. Discussion?
I think it's a good utilization, I mean, it's, the project or the property itself needs the upgrade. I echo Mr. Fineran's statement, this is, we have this nebulous January 1st, 1980, that it doesn't seem like we can nail down, or anybody can nail down, so it makes it difficult. Clearly, we appreciate the abutters and their thought process, through this whole process also, so I, I know that eight might be a quote-unquote compromise, and might not be exactly the way the bylaw is written, but this January 1st date seems like we just can't nail it down in any fashion, specifically to this applicant, so I think it's the right thing to do to move forward with the eight.
Suzanne?
I agree with Scott. I, I do remember there was testimony that this was for sale as a six-bedroom?
So there's been conflicting testimony.
Conflicting?
There's testimony in that there was 10 bedrooms, and then there was a, the real estate listing showing six.
So that's, yeah.
And then assessors card.
Yes, we'll need to make a specific finding based on the testimony as to what we believe that if there was several bedrooms. If you want to proceed. Mark?
I, again, I mean, Kevin's own word, the preponderance of the evidence, and there is no evidence that there were eight or 10 bedrooms there, and I, and, you know, we, we do this office thing, and we all know what happens.
Yeah.
In, in effect, there is no change here, and I am not in favor of this.
Thank you. Frank?
No questions or comments at this point?
I'm satisfied, I'm satisfied.
How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, with conditions?
Of course, yes.
By Jerry, is there a second?
Second approval.
Second by Suzanne. Findings?
Findings? It's in a RB district, overlay is RANs Bond, no flood zone, no other appeals, special permit. Lot size is 39894, it's on a public road. Existing is 8.6 for structure, and with everything 10.1, now it's going to be 14.6 and 15.7. There were two letters in opposition, two letters of concern, we'll put it. It's a 240-23B, 240-23G I, and I do have my notes say that I need to see the finding page on the historical letter.
It's in the North Falmouth Historical District, there is a decision, I believe it's been submitted.
I have it here, and do we want that in the findings or in conditions? Findings?
Say that in the findings that there's a decision.
Okay.
The conditions will be added.
Okay. I think that's all I have.
There's planning board comments in the file.
Yep. Engineering, water.
So, in terms of findings, as to the bedroom issue, applicant has revised their plans from 10 to eight bedrooms at this point, we've agreed to case the offices, which will be conditioned. There is correspondence from the Board of Health indicating that they believe that there was 10 bedrooms. The board considered, as part of its deliberations, conflicting evidence from a real estate listing that there was six at one time. My suggestion, if the board is agreeable, is that we're making a specific finding that based on the bylaw that there would be eight bedrooms.
Agreed.
That would be my suggestion if people are in agreement, that's the finding, that's just to cover this.
Yes.
You want the removal of a closet?
What's that?
You want the removal of a closet?
That will be, that's gonna be, that'll be a condition.
Conditions.
The bedroom count is based on the current Title V definition of a bedroom as to size, privacy, and so on. That's what we're basing our, the board's finding as to eight bedrooms is based upon the definition under Title V as presented by the applicant.
Where in the bylaw does it say that we can use Title V to determine the amount of bedrooms?
It doesn't, I'm just saying, for the purposes of the record, if it's reviewed or appealed, that's how the board came to its deliberation decision, why I've just had it get in there. If appealed, they'll know what, what our decision-making was, and they'll tell us whether we were right or wrong. But I just want, it's, the standard of appeal, looking at for whether the decision is arbitrary or capricious, I would prefer to at least put out for the public record, as well as in the decision, how we came to the decision.
Pretty arbitrary to me.
Over your objections.
Yeah.
Conditions?
Conditions? Planning, engineering.
Comments? Per plans, standard hours of work?
Historical, has conditions in here? Yeah, the standards, the encasements and the closets?
Yeah, the, due to the bedroom reduction that the offices, closets could be removed, and four-foot cased openings, not to be, specifically, the bedroom, not to be used as a bedroom. Other conditions, Mr. Fineran? Jerry?
Thank you.
Anything else, Norrie?
No other structures.
Further changes?
Yes, no further, yes.
Hours?
Yep, standard hours of work, please.
So the septic design stays at 10?
Yeah. It says it's adequate for 10.
It's up to the Board, it's up to the Board of Health, really.
We're coming.
Anything else?
Now, a bedroom, the definite, a definition of a bedroom requires a closet, is that correct?
Yes.
That's what I was gonna say, otherwise, the Board of Health can walk through there and call it a 10-bedroom.
Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Closed?
Nope.
4 to 1, the vote carries.
Thank you very much, I know this has been a long process, appreciate your time and consideration on this.
We'll just say to the abutters, we thank you for the comments and your concerns. Fortunately, I would agree that this is a bylaw that definitely does, needs to be retweaked, readdressed through the planning board and town meeting. Expect a little more on that later.
I'm sorry. I'm just glad it's getting down.
Next up, we have continuation 09322 Spear, trustee, 42 Lake Lehman Road, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct a single-family dwelling exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures.
Hi, my name is Carol Spear. I own the property at 42 Lake Lehman Road, lived in Falmouth since 1977. I'm a nurse, I worked at Falmouth Hospital for 35 years. I started construction on a new house there in 2017, but I had some contractor issues around COVID, where he went up to an amount that I could not conceive of affording, so I stopped everything for a couple of years, and then got in touch with Valley. And they're going to be, hopefully, building my house. It changed the, the look of the house, it's gone from two, up and downstairs to a single, single level.
Good evening, my name is Joe Valley with the Valley Group. When Carol came to us with her plan and with her problem, we looked at the, the existing plan that was created, and it was a two-story house, master down and two bedrooms up, it was probably 1,750 square feet, and in talking with her, we came to the conclusion that one-level living was really better for her than two-story living, and so we set about trying to design a one-level home using the existing foundation. In order to create a two-bedroom home, with great room kitchen and a small study, we created a house that was, is about 1,650 square feet. In doing that, we bumped out the rear of the house, which had additional square footage, which increased the lot coverage. Just pull this up if I can get it for you. So this is the revised plan, and you can see here the bump out, which is 20 feet by 16, too, which enabled us to put two bedrooms in this wing. We also added stairs to the rear so that they could get out the kitchen, out to the backyard, we added stairs to the 24 by 610 front porch. The total existing and proposed coverage by structures is 23.4 existing, by structures and parking is currently 27.7 as a percentage of lot coverage, and so we're seeking relief on the additional lot coverage. If there's any questions?
Questions from the board? Scott?
Question, who's voting on this?
This is the first time this has come before the board.
This was a continuation that had been...
It's a continuation.
It was open.
It was open, yeah.
Well, yeah, but you didn't really get anywhere, because the lot had not been staked, so I think you four, you four went any type of discussion on.
Yes, I guess at this point, all the regular voting members would be.
I'd just like to point out that the lot is still not staked, and, I mean, it's required, it's written several times in red.
I was out there today at 3:00, and all the stakes were in place.
Lot corners are not staked, sir, as required, and it's written in red in must, and, I mean, this is a continual problem that we have, and everyone's supposed to stake the lot corners and the building itself, and we've been going over this for months now, and I just have to say that any one that comes in front of me that isn't staked properly is a no vote. I, I, we're volunteers, we don't get paid anything to do this, and when we go somewhere and all the requirements aren't net, I can't do my job, and, I mean, it just needs to be done, it's a must, it's written in red in the instructions that you were given, must. So I, any lots that, from now and into the future, any lots that aren't properly staked are gonna get a no vote from me, and then you risk only aggravating one more member of this board, and, as I say, we're volunteers, we don't get paid, and I'm, I'm sorry, I might sound gruff, but you're wasting my time.
Sorry for that, my understanding was that the, it wasn't the lot corners, I must have misread it, I thought it was the new work, the additional work that we were doing.
Yeah, there's a...
The board will be refining and clearly defining its policy regarding this issue in the coming month. Let me just ask the board, Mr. Fineran's point is well-taken, this is the second time the issues come up, how is the, what is the board's feeling about this issue? Are you looking for a continuation, or do you believe that you, based on site visit, you were able to proceed?
I would be looking for a continuation for the reasons Mr. Fineran outlined, and we also had one other open item, I thought, from the December 1st, was, was the lot even buildable, was one of the questions that, that...
That's a building department issue rather than zoning, but certainly an important question.
Right.
Suzanne?
I agree with Mr. Fineran in this particular lot, because it's, it's, it's tight, and we need to see the exact borders.
I mean, all lots.
I drove by today, so I did see the stakes, however, I will defer to the, the will of the board, especially since this is a request for special permit based on lot coverage, I think it's important in a situation like this to have the four corners staked so people have a reference. Frank, your feeling?
I would agree with the comments of the other members of the board, I, I did go out, I took a look, I walked around this lot, I had no trouble visualizing the building itself, because there's a foundation there.
Right.
Often, there is not, but there is a foundation there, but I did, I guess, comment to myself that I found the staking kind of, well, it wasn't complete. I would like to see it done completely, so that everybody can vote with full confidence that they know what they're doing.
Jerry?
I agree with the board, I give the majority of the board so far.
So, Mr. Valley and Miss Spear, we were looking at a brief continuation, and I would say that I'm not opposed to this project based on what it looks like, and I don't think the board is, but we need to be able to, the board is entitled to be able to look at whether or not, they need to see the four corners of the lot. Do we have a short date that we can get this back in front of us, Norrie?
January 19th.
So the next, next hearing, January 19th, is what the board would be willing to do at that time.
Thank you, we'll get a stake. Is it just the lot corners you were looking for?
Yes, we need to be able to...
It's on the instructions that you're given.
Thank you.
But that's what is missing at the moment.
Thank you.
And, I mean, you're looking at five minutes on the 19th or whatever, but...
Thank you, appreciate it.
These rules have to be universal.
Is there a...
I'll make a motion to continue to the 19th.
Motion is made to continue the 19th, by Suzanne, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fineran, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
We'll see you back on the 19th, thank you. Board like to take a five-minute break, or continue to press on?
I'm ready to press.
We're gonna take a five-minute break, we'll be recessed to the sound of the next gavel. gavel. If you can hear us. Next up on the agenda, we have new hearings. First up, we have hearing 9722 Brenner, 3 Ruth Terrace, Wacoit, requesting a special permit to construct an attached accessory apartment and to allow home occupation for mobile coffee business.
And we have Brenner. We have, well--
Hi, my name is Tim O'Reilly.
Sorry, sir. We have to read the notes first. Thank you.
No, you can stay there. Stay there. It's William and Carol Brenner, 3 Ruth Terrace in Wacoit, Mass., applied to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit pursuant to 24023I and 24162 of the Code of Falmouth to construct a detached accessory apartment and to allow a home occupation for a mobile coffee business on the subject property at 3 Ruth Terrace. It's in an RB zone. The overlay is Wacoit Bay, not in a flood zone, no previous special permits. Lot size is 24332. Right now, the lot coverage by structure is 6.4 and 16.29%. Total is 8.8 and 18.6. And I think that's all I have on here. It's a 2423. Yeah, I did all that. That's what I have. No letters of opposition or support. I think that's what I have.
Referrals?
And, let's see, I have-- Assessors, no comment. Planning board, I'm getting that. Fire department, no comment. Sorry, skipping through here. Planning has quite a long one. We can just incorporate that. Correct? I did see a Board of Health one in here. Planning, fire. Engineering is quite long. That's planning. Planning is two. That's true. I forgot about that. Right. Engineering. I shall read engineering for you, although it's pretty straightforward. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Ruth Terrace is a public right of way in this area. No alterations, no alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes on the right of way would require a filing with the engineering department. Any connections, alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate, appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property abutters or public rights away. A dry well is proposed for the new roof area, as we typically recommend. If approved, the accessory apartment will require an address assigned to the, by the DPW department. The existing dwelling will remain 3 Ruth and the accessory shall be 3 Ruth Terrace, Apartment A. We, upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence. While this is a small lot, the proposed work is close to the abutting properties with the existing fencing. Proposed work area location and lot grades. It appears that erosion and sedimentation should not be an issue with normal construction practices. However, the contractor should be held responsible for implementing erosion and sediment controls. We recommend the following conditions. Construction activity shall not cause erosion or sedimentation to the abutting properties of the town right of way. It appears that portions of the poster mail fence are located in the public right of way. Permanent installation of objects not owned by the town in the municipal right of way will require a license from the select board. We defer to the Zoning Board of Appeals. If this matter should be addressed prior to any approval. That's engineering. Concom, no comment. Board of Health. The property is located in a CPO. Although the septic system is suitable for four bedrooms, the ACC apartment bylaw requires an IA system when increasing bedroom count beyond one bedroom per 10,000 feet two of lot space located in a CPO. The project will require an IA system unless a bedroom in the main house is eliminated, keeping the total bedrooms at, on the lot at three. Plans do indicate that an upstairs bedroom is going to be eliminated by a cased opening doorway and enlargement. This would be acceptable to the Board of Health and the current septic system can remain as currently built with no IA needed. A permit will need to be issued by the Board of Health to tie into the septic system. A food service permit may be required by the Board of Health. This referral does not imply that the applicant will be issued a food service permit. The applicant will need to meet the criteria for the permit and comply with the applicable food safety regs. Suggests that the applicant meet with the Board of Health. And that's what I have.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening. My name's Tim O'Reilly. I work with backyard ADUs. I'm here tonight with the homeowners. I'll present about the accessory apartment and the homeowners will present about the second, coffee. Yeah, mobile coffee permit. Wonderful. So, you know, going back to the bylaw, this is all about aging in place. This is allowing a family to stay together and age in place on one property here in Falmouth. It'll be the only one on the property. The existing homeowners will continue to inhabit the main house while their sister will live in the accessory apartment. We worked with the planning department to come up with the size, which is 750 square feet. As the Board of Health notes, we worked with them to make sure we're not increasing the bedroom count. So we worked with the homeowners to identify where in the house bedroom conversion makes sense. And that is on the second floor where we'll abide by all the building department requirements to do that cased opening. We convert that to an office. That'll allow us to have that one bedroom in the ADU. With the DPW, we're doing the water connection for the water department. And like they noted there, the topography of the site, everything is contained in that backyard, so we don't really anticipate any sedimentation on runoff. Happy to abide by all the address requirements. Yep. And then the fence, obviously predates this project. I'm not sure what sort of precedent you guys have for those items. So I'm looking forward to your feedback and it can be moved as needed. Regarding the staking, we had, obviously, I was here last month. I had our survey out there to stake those two properties, the setback. And we've used his digital file to put the orange stakes in. I had him, per your feedback last time, scheduled to come out right here in the new year. But he got COVID and his family got COVID. So I, he was unable to make it out to do those staking to your requirements. We will stake that, obviously, before doing any construction because we want to make sure, you know, it is exactly where it is, especially with the retaining wall and with the setback. So that's all I have.
Mr. Fineran?
You witnessed the last--
Yes.
And you were here last time.
Yep.
And we went through the whole thing.
Yep.
And you were given the handout with the application that says must on the staking. And you were aware of that last time. I understand you do use your GPS or whatever, but if you can, and your stakes are wrong. They're not by the, there's a little, like a three-inch stake out there near the fence. I mean, the stakes are tall, so we can read what's on the stakes. They're supposed to be duly marked. And I'm not crawling down in the wet grass to look and see if you have something on a stake that's six inches sticking out of the ground. But you haven't met our standards. You did not stake the lot corners. And then the stakes that you did use aren't proper. So as I said, anybody who comes in here with, while doing their homework and artwork, I mean, we're volunteers. I'm going to vote no. And I suggest, like the last hearing, you--
Yep.
Request a continuance.
Okay. Yeah, I really appreciate that feedback. I did try, you know, to get our survey out there before.
And as I said, I don't see if you're, you know, that, I'm not familiar with the system you use, but it's a GPS or whatever. I mean, who's going to know the difference if you went out there with their certified plot plan and, and put in the stakes? I'm sure they'll be right on the, you know, whatever. But there's no stakes there at all. There's, it's no way I can entertain this.
I would just add a comment, general comment, not this project, just in general. You know, as we work in towns across the Commonwealth, you know, trying to, these apartments, especially with the purpose of the bylaw, you know, aging in place, not a lot of options for elderly. That was an earlier project. All these little things just do add cost, which does kind of go back to the purpose. It makes a difference.
Well, if you're having a plot plan, they can put the corner stakes in. They have to find all the corners anyway. So there's no additional cost, as you indicated. That's just not a correct statement, sir.
The board in consensus with that feeling, Mr. Fineran?
I am. I think, again, it's a good project. I'm fully supportive of the project, but we kind of have these gating items and we're trying to get people to follow the gating items. And again, I fully support the project. I just wish that it wasn't kind of, you know, fiberglass stakes in the ground. We should, we should have everybody abide by the rules.
And mark the stakes. I mean, they're available at all the lumber yards, the proper stakes.
Wooden.
The wooden stakes. They're, every lumberyard sells them in bundles. And then you, you have to indicate what the stake is. I mean, the, I'm sorry, the fiberglass ones from Job Lab won't fly.
Frank, feelings?
No, I, I agree with that. There was another property I went out to last week. I can't remember which one it was, but there were stakes, but it didn't, the stakes weren't labeled. You didn't know what they represented. And it's, you can't guess. You've got to know. So if it's the edge of the building, it's got to say edge of building. If it's the location of septic system, it's got to say location of septic system. If it's a corner lot, it should say corner lot. Right, just right on the side of the, that's why I use wood stakes, Mr. Fineran is pointing. So you can write on it what it is.
And they, they're good for at least three years before they snap off.
You got all the broken hockey sticks from the, from the rink.
Jerry, any additional comments?
I'd just like to say that I, I fully support these accessory dwellings. I, before I was ever on this board, I amended the zoning or the bylaws for accessory apartments in sewered areas. And I have another one in the back of my head, but I'm not against these at all. As a matter of fact, I'm 1,000% for them. I think it's a, really a tool that we can use in the, you know, in this affordable housing toolbox. And the aging in place thing is, is important. I mean, the, Barstow County is the second oldest county in the United States of America. I mean, the median age in this town is my age. And that's old.
Can I ask a technical question? Oh, well, I think I saw three sheds.
Ah, yes.
Two?
Yeah.
Three? Two? Those are included in the, in the structures?
In the, oh, yes.
The structure, okay.
Yep.
So Norine, I guess we'll be looking for a continuation date.
I guess the question I would have to the board and perhaps to the owner as well is, do you want to proceed? This is actually a two-part request. The applicant actually has a business, home-based business request as well. And we offered essentially to combine the two requests to make things easier for the homeowner. homeowner, but I don't know whether.
I'm prepared to take up the home-based business if the board is, or.
You don't want, it's essentially.
Then if any public wants to speak, they've got to come perhaps twice.
Yeah, I think we should just wait, too.
That's fair.
I do have one suggestion. I know our surveyor postponed me to next week. It would be possible to, you know, proceed pending him being there with those stakings.
No.
No. Want the property staked? How much time do you think you're going to need, and do you have a?
All right, so we have a problem.
We're going to need a request for a continuation.
The board is absolutely swamped for your next meeting.
Yep.
And you can't meet at midnight. That being said, we'd be looking at February 2, which is part of the reason why I was inquiring whether you want to talk about at least the home-based business portion while they're here.
I don't think this is going to be a really long hearing.
I don't think so either.
I don't think we have a problem with the home-based.
And I think after tonight, we're probably going to find that we don't have these problems anymore. I certainly hope so.
But they could still proceed with the Board of Health.
Right, they could have the conversation, right. They actually need a permit from the zoning board as well for the home-based business portion, which is a separate request from the accessory dwelling.
But they could at least start.
Well. Can I just talk to you about, my name's Carol Brenner, and I'm one of the owners of Three Ruth Terrace. And the home-based business is a mobile coffee trailer that I found out from coming and talking to you guys that I needed to get a permit because I'm using that as my address for shipping and storage. I'm not operating the business.
Is that the black one that was in the driveway?
Yes.
Okay.
Cute little coffee trailer that's going to go out on the road, but the home address was just being used for receiving our goods and storing our goods and possibly, I'm going to talk to the health department about baking a couple of things there, but I haven't figured that all out yet. So, we've talked to all of our neighbors, and I don't think any of them are here, and I can get letters from them saying that they're all okay with it. But it's not going to be me selling coffee in our driveway or out of our house. It's just using that as a home or as an address for the business because it's mobile. Does that make sense?
So, let me just ask the board again, would the board like to take up, either continue this entire hearing or would like to bifurcate it and take up the issue about the home-based business?
I would be okay with bifurcating.
Yeah. Fine by me.
I would go bifurcating if they.
If we do bifurcate, can we fit them in on the 19th?
Well, what you could do is if you agree to the home-based business, you could vote that portion.
Right, and then it would be quicker.
And that you could proceed with that and then come back for the accessory dwelling.
Be a separate decision, correct?
Correct. So, we, yeah.
Which it will be anyhow, correct?
Yeah.
They don't need a, they don't need a separate application?
No, they've already applied for most. Right, so we would potentially just continue half.
Would you like to make any other presentation about what the home-based business would be this evening, ma'am?
So, it's just a mobile coffee trailer that, it's just a six-foot by 12-foot trailer that I'll be out and about in Falmouth selling coffee. It's called Slipjack Coffee, in case you all like coffee, it's really good.
Like job sites and stuff like that, or?
Yeah, I'm looking at different locations right now, talking to some people to be.
On like a rotating schedule kind of, so?
Hopefully, kind of at the same place all the time, so people know where to get the coffee, but maybe finding some other places in the summer.
It would be perfect.
I'm addicted to coffee and been told by my doctor I have to cut down, but I mean.
I would get a new doctor.
I'd chase, I'd chase a good cup of coffee around town if I knew where it was.
Jerry, do you have any questions? Frank?
How is your supplies and inventory delivered and where do you keep them?
It'll probably, how does that coffee come, UPS?
UPS.
UPS. And in our basement, which I gave a little map of where it would be stored, we'll have a refrigerator down there for the milk and shelving for the rest of it.
Are you going to be doing any roasting of beans at your house, or?
No, we're getting it all shipped from our favorite coffee.
The Board of Health would probably need to inspect like refrigeration and all that kind of stuff, yeah. No, I have no problem with it.
No issues.
Public comment as to the issue of the home-based occupation only.
I just wanted to make a quick comment.
He wants coffee.
If it's helpful to the board, I have every intention of requesting a continuance on one of my hearings on the 19th. So, if that was to free up some time, I just wanted to let, I figured I'd let you know that now.
Aren't you nice?
Excellent.
Yeah, that's nice.
And that's not dullable, yourself.
You know, I'm not requesting a continuance. I have submitted a request, I've noted.
Perfect.
Any other public comment regarding the home-based occupation? How would the board like to proceed on this issue?
Motion to approve the home-based coffee business?
Do we have to go to close first?
Close, sorry.
Motion to close.
Second.
By Mr. Fineran, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 I second his motion.
Now, you're making a motion to approve the conditions?
Correct.
Seconded by Mr. Fineran. Findings?
Findings? Oh.
Meets the definitions of the bylaw.
All right.
No opposition offered at the hearing, none in the file, I believe, as to home-based occupation. Testimony is that it's, they will not be roasting. They'll be receiving things by UPS or other.
Storage as per plan on, that was submitted.
Storage, yeah, trailer or in the house.
Must be approved for the health?
Yep. Any other findings?
He wants us off.
Conditions?
Well, the ones about home-based occupation and number of employees and vehicles and so forth, yeah.
Yep, standard, well, the conditions of the bylaw. Hours of, standard hours of operation. Well, it's not really.
It's not really applicable here.
Not really applicable, actually, so, nope.
There's no construction.
So, you can come and go as you please.
I wanted to pry people's coffee at 5:00 AM.
You can sell on Sunday now.
Anything else Noreen suggested? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's a vote, at least is. We've got one of two things knocked off for you tonight.
Okay, so the question is back to the board as far as, or if the gentleman can address whether the property can be properly staked.
Yeah, you said the guy's coming next week.
Approximately a week prior to January 19.
Yeah, he'll be there. I can get him there next week.
Okay, so if you will guarantee that it will be staked a week in advance, we would be willing to schedule you for January 19.
Great. Do we need an extension signed, or?
Nope. So, if that so pleases the board.
Thank Mr. Clower.
Make a motion for the 19th?
Motion has been made to continue the hearing to the 19th. Is there a second? Is there a second? It's made. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's a vote. We'll see you back on the 19th. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is hearing number 9822 Noonan, 11 Surrey Lane, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow a home-based service business wood delivery and to allow a vehicle over 13,000 pound gross vehicle weight.
We have an application for Michael K. Noonan, 11 Surrey Lane, East Falmouth, applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 24162 and 2438G4B of the Code of Falmouth to allow a home-based service business wood delivery and to allow a vehicle over 13,000 G V W. I don't know what that stands for.
Gross vehicle weight.
Thank you. The subject property is 11 Surrey Lane, East Falmouth, Mass. And we have comments. We have no comment from planning. Water department, no comment. Let's see what that is. Craig O'Malley. I don't know what that means.
That's the fire department, I think there was a.
Craig O'Malley's fire department?
Yes.
Okay.
Of burning or anything like that.
Okay, the remnants of any wood processing cannot be burned on the property. Okay, from the fire department. Thank you. Assessors, no comment. Concom, no comment. But we do have a few from engineering. This application, this is from engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Surrey Lane is a private right-of-way in this area. Carriage Shop Road is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, we defer to the board if the applicant should obtain an approved driveway permit from the engineering division prior to closing the hearing for the special permit, or that the board include the following condition if the special permit is approved. The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division and a driving driveway permit. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department, and this project must not direct any stormwater runoff to the public property or others' public right-of-way. And I have no letters. Well, I did have one letter. You are right, one, I think. And it's an butter. Well, we had two letters. One confirming that there was a fire, and one person asking that the project take place on Carriage Shop Road because of the width of the driveway on this side. And let's see what I have for findings. It's in an AGA zone.
No, not yet.
Not yet. Sorry. I will be quiet.
Before we begin, Mr. Noonan, I have one question because I may have to recuse myself. Did you resign on Martha's Vineyard at some point?
Yes.
I'm going to be recusing myself from this hearing. I'll ask that Mr. Potamus be appointed, and I'll ask our vice chairman to take over this particular hearing. I'll be stepping out.
Should I do the findings, Sam?
No.
No.
You're going to have to.
I'll keep quiet still. You going over there?
Yeah, just. Okay, Mr. Noonan?
Yes.
Give us an overview of the project, please.
I'm delivering firewood. And I opened up the business with the state in the town, but I didn't have the permission to have a homeowner business. That's why I got a letter to appear here tonight. I went to the driveway department. I have the permit all filled out and approved for the back driveway. And I was selling wood for a year, and then my house burnt down, and I started getting a bunch of letters, and I just showed up here to find, to get the permit to have a home-based business.
Okay, so in the file, there was a list of violations to earlier comments. The unpermitted driveway, that you have been operating a business, and improper signage also, correct? Is that what you referenced?
The signs were taken down when my ex-wife got a Gmail saying to take the signs down. They were taken down that day. The business has ceased to exist since I took those signs down.
Okay. When, I guess I'll keep going, and then we'll open it up to the other board for questions also. Could you speak to the driveway component? So, you're saying that you would be exiting onto Carriage Shop Road? You wouldn't be using the Surrey Lane to access any of your business, is that correct?
Yes, my truck's parked in the front now. I'm not doing business out there right now. I'm not having any logs delivered since I got that, my ex-wife got that Gmail to me saying that the signs had to come down, the business was closed until you went to the town hall meeting and asked permission to get the permit to have a home-based business. I believe she paid the $200 at the time to get the permit that day that that information was given to me.
And just walk me through again on the home-based business. You're going to be replacing the house that had the fire?
House is burnt down. The insurance company hasn't ripped it down yet. I have a contractor ready to build them, in the process of doing that also. But I'm not, the house is just a house. We're going to build a new one. I'm going to build a new one, a smaller house.
Right.
Where nobody comes visits.
No, I understand. We all drive by the property, you know, I noticed that you had the fire.
I didn't know that. I'm working all the time. I don't see who's driving by.
Yeah. I guess, again, just one more clarifier, then I'll let the board ask additional questions. As far as work hours, what are your thoughts on the work hours that you would be seeking?
I don't have any straight work hours. I have three abutting neighbors, and I just, I try to treat them the way I'd like to be treated. So, I run the chainsaw through two cycles a day, and I split the next day. That's what I do. It's not a big business.
But are you running your chainsaw at 5:00 in the morning or 9:00 in the morning? I'm trying to.
I said, like I said, I treat my neighbors the way I'd like to be treated. I usually start the chainsaw around 10:30, 11:00. I run it through two cycles a day, if that. And then I split wood with a small five, six horsepower Honda motor. I have no other machinery but me.
And loading the trucks themselves?
I do it by hand.
By hand, okay. I have no further questions. Suzanne?
So, you would have no problem with us conditioning nine to five with the equipment?
Whatever you'd like to do. I'm just being here, this business was going on for a year until my house burnt down, and then I got 40 letters acknowledging I'm in Falmouth. So, I'm just here so I can continue to run my business legally with permits and stuff. I didn't have a permit. That was the problem, I thought. If there was another problem, I wasn't aware of it, that's all.
Where do you have?
I did see the, I did go to the driveway department and got the permit, filled out and stamped, and that's just going to be another process during rebuilding my house. I have a few things going on, so I'm just trying to run a business legally with the permits, that's all. I just didn't know I needed a permit to do it. I didn't, wasn't thinking of that. It was my ignorance. I didn't know that I needed that permit to have a home-based business.
Are you, are you pulling water and electric out of the, out of your old house?
The one that burnt down?
Yeah. Where are you getting your water from?
From the water main in the cellar.
From the?
People put a 60-foot mobile home in the yard.
Right.
Hooked up the septic and the water. They capped off part of the water main and just ran it out over my patio out into a stuck-together house.
It's permitted through the building department.
Okay. And electric, same, you pull it?
They tapped into the line. They just clip onto it with a clip, and then they shoot it into the trailer home.
I'm just asking about water, because we've had a few fires, like on Blacksmith Shop Road, where there's accumulation of wood, and there's just been fires, like spontaneous fires.
This was a chimney fire that burnt the house down.
Oh, your house was, yeah.
Yeah, I know. It was a chimney fire.
And how do you stand insurance-wise with all this? Having a, having a home-based occupation?
$2,500 a year for my truck. It has a million dollars worth of insurance on it, and I have homeowner's insurance.
Okay.
First, I respect anybody who works hard for a living. And I did firewood for a living for a short time, growing up in Vermont, and it's hard But, I mean, we have to go by the bylaws. What's the G V W of your truck?
24,000 pounds, 12 tons.
What, you fit about two cords on there?
I don't, I only deliver one cord at a time.
At a time, yeah.
I can only deliver four cords a week physically.
I hear that.
So, I do two or three, because I stack and deliver it. I don't just drop it.
And, I mean, and this is an important service. I mean, the people, the number of people that supplement with wood now is obviously increasing. But again, we have to do this by the rules, and under home occupation, there's just so many things here that stand out, and there shall be no exterior...
I have a shed built for the business itself on the property.
Yeah, but, I mean, there should be no exterior storage of material or equipment. Obviously, that's, can't be met. No equipment or process shall be used in home occupations which creates noise, vibration, flare, fumes, odors, or electrical interference. And the thing that we have to keep in mind is, this town is filled with landscapers, and, you know, they're affected by this bylaw and are very limited as to what they can do. And, you know...
So we do allow some storage? We've had landscapers who have had some product. So if you look at 24162F3D, they're talking about the maximum of exterior storage you can have.
Yeah, I have that one checked as well. I haven't gotten there yet, but, you know, before that, all exterior storage, including trailers, shall be completely screened from view. And, I mean, you have a number of trees there along the property line, but they're deciduous trees, and, you know, they don't provide a screen.
I cut the rest of the trees down in the yard. I took 30 trees out of the yard.
Yeah, well, I mean, you need to, I mean, to screen, I mean, you're going to need evergreens or some kind of...
I have a fence up.
Hedge.
Spent $13,000 on a fence. That's what blocks my trailer and my wood splitter when I'm working. My neighbors have a problem with it. All three abutting neighbors, there's no problem.
It's supposed to be screened from the normal view.
I can put up another fence.
And then there's the limit of the 13,000 pounds.
I'll buy a smaller truck.
How about this one here? There shall be no running or servicing of motorized equipment used in connection with a home-based service business on the premises of said business. I mean, I'm not trying to hem me up here, because I know you're, you know, work hard, and I've done that, but I just see so many places here, and then, you know, we can go over to...
Well, could you tell me what I need to do so I can work for a living, please? I don't know. That's why I'm here.
Well, it's, to be honest with you, Mr. Noonan, I think you should go through this, the two bylaws that are on your application.
So the vehicle is allowed by special permit by the zoning board, right?
Yeah.
If you're over 13,000, you can park by special permit.
Yeah, I understand, but, I mean, that's the one that we can, but...
And so one of the neighbors had proposed that upon receiving some driveway permit, that the vehicle could and would be parked in back, which would be effectively screened from the others.
That's why we put the fence up. That's what the neighbors wanted. That's what they asked for.
Again, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but that's one neighbor.
All three of my neighbors.
They sign letters.
They all sign papers stating there's no problem with my business. I run a chainsaw for approximately hour and 20 minutes a day, three times a week. I have a 10-horsepower wood splitter surrounded by a $13,000 fence.
You know, it's also possible that you could condition if you're concerned about noise, et cetera.
There should be no stockpiling or storage of landscape media, including topsoil, sand, crushed stone, gravel, seashells, seaweed, mulch, or wood chips for resale by any home-based service or business. Again, I mean, it's my job to apply these bylaws, and, I mean, you know, we have some leeway here with the truck, but, I mean, by no means can, and I can't find where it was at.
They do allow exterior storage, but not to exceed more than 10% of the lot area.
I mean, he does cover quite a few of these things. There's no employees.
Yeah.
You know, he's got quite a few things in here covered.
What's the size of your lot?
It's big. I don't know that you want a picture of it? I have a picture.
I have a picture here.
I think there's a, yeah, I was going to say, I think...
Half an acre?
It's quite a, it's a 60-foot mobile home like a sunfish.
I mean, I'm just going by, you know, the special, it's required that you have 30,000 square feet under G1A.
So you need a special permit if your lot is undersized. So that's the limit. So if you, if your lot is over that size, you can do this as of right. If your lot is under that size, you require a special permit. So it's, the bylaw's really rather confusing, and I think that's...
Yeah, I understand, but there are...
There's another building lot on the property that I'm not building on. It's already been approved by the town, but I'm not building out there. There's another lot already been approved, but I'm not building that, not at this time in my life, anyway.
And how big is that lot?
Not even a lot.
It's a... Oh, it's, oh, I understand. So you're still 24th?
It's a little high words. I can't, I don't know how to say it. It was like an in-law home or something?
Yeah, okay. I was just wondering if you combined, it would get you to the 30?
I don't think we can, I'm not sure. I don't know. Like I said, I was running this business for a year, then my house burnt down, and then I'm here. So I was just trying to get it right, so I don't do anything wrong. That's why I'm here to ask to get a home permit to sell by...
So they do address the motorized equipment? If you look at these numbers or something else, 1, 240, 162, 3D2, they talk about there should be no running or servicing of motorized equipment used in connection within the layout of the street, et cetera. So there are provisions here to use equipment, et cetera, right? They talk about loading, et cetera. So in having a conversation with one of the abutters, what they said was that they were not opposed to the home-based business. They just were requested to have, you know, any noise activity be limited to 9 to 5.
And to have them move the driveway to the other side?
Right, and to use the driveway on the back, and that other than that, they were not opposed.
And did I read somewhere also that they were looking for seven days a week? I would have to say that Sundays...
Seven days a week.
Sundays would be out.
I don't work on Sundays. I treat my neighbors like I'd like to be treated. I don't work on Sundays.
Again, I mean, I want to see your work succeed, but, I mean, I have ticked off no less than nine sections of the bylaw where...
What do I need to do to make it right? I don't know. That's why I'm here. I'm asking for help.
You know, I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, I don't know either. I mean, it says it should be screened. In my mind, that would be evergreens or something that's going to work year-round. I mean, the deciduous trees you have...
That's what we put the fence in for, so nobody would see that.
I don't know if that's going to help them right now.
You know, I mean, I drove by, I mean, I stopped there, and there's large piles out back covered with brown tarps. I mean, they're certainly not screened.
What do you mean by that, sir? I don't know what that screened means.
So you can't, actually, there's a definition. There's a definition here that it can be seen by the normal eye, I think it says, or something like that. Screen means it can't be seen.
Then I'll level it out. I'll level it so it can't be seen. It's only 12 feet high. I'll bring it down to eight feet. I'll stack it in the yard. What do you want me to do?
I honestly, I don't know. I almost think that I would like some input from council. I mean, you know, I know we can give you, you know, one or two or three of these, but we're looking at like nine.
I don't even know what you're talking about. I mean, I don't know what you're looking at.
Well, it's what you...
The zoning bylaw.
It's the bylaw that you've applied under.
Okay. My ex-wife did that. I didn't fill out the paperwork. I apologize. I didn't do that.
Can we go through each condition you're concerned with, Mark?
Sure.
Because I think Norrie has provided adequate response.
Yeah, I understand that we can give a special, but, I mean, well, first off, the lot is not 30,000 square feet as in G1. Hold on, let me go through them one at a time.
But let her respond one at a time.
All right, so the lot size is just the cutoff for what needs to come for a special permit. So what they're directing you as the board is that if the lot is under that size, that they just, that's a requirement for a special permit as opposed to as of right.
I understand, but we're not looking at one, two, or three of these.
Well, let's go through the others one at a time. Well, I mean, that's, I think he has a, but out of respect, why don't we go through what number two? That's not an issue. Do you agree?
No, I agree that he can get a special permit, but, I mean, how many of, my question is going to be, okay, let me get over to Tuss. Let me finish, please, here. My question is going to be, how many of these do we actually allow? I mean, if he, if...
It's not in front of us right now. This is a special case for this gentleman. Whether we go back to town meeting and say we can only have X amount, that's fine. That's not within our purview.
Our purview is the bylaws. Okay, here's the second one. Number two. There shall be no change in the outside appearance of the premises, nor any visible evidence of such home occupations other than one non-illuminated sign. There shall be no exterior storage of material or equipment. There's two.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, there is.
Right, but then, if you go further into the bylaw, it tells you that the maximum amount of exterior storage shall not exceed more than 10% of the lot area. So we have in the past conditioned landscape companies that are allowed to have a minimal amount of material, and it's just based on, you know, proper following of the bylaw. So I think part of the problem here is that you have some language that conflicts, and it creates trouble, I think.
We could condition it if we show approval or denied it.
Right, so there is exterior storage allowed.
Yeah, all right. I mean, I understand that, but, I mean, can we, all right, let me go on to the next one. No equipment or process shall be used in a home occupation that creates noise, vibration, flare, fumes, odors, or electrical interference.
Right, and then, on the next page, under D2, they're telling you that you can have motorized equipment that you use. It just can't be within the street, normal activities.
No, it says there shall be no...
Motorized equipment such as lawn mowers, Bobcat, excavation, maybe loaded, offloaded, not in the street.
It says right in the beginning, there shall be no running or servicing of motorized equipment used in connection with the home-based service business on the premises of said business or within the layout of the street.
Right.
I don't read anywhere there where, and I'm, like I said, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to make this, these rules work.
Yeah, so I was looking at that, but I'm looking at, you know, they're still envisioning that people can...
Use a ball, yeah.
Right, right, that there are certain, yeah. What they're saying is that they just don't want you operating, like, in the street as part of, you know, interrupting the public item.
I don't read, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I don't read it that way. It says, there shall be no running or servicing of motorized equipment used in connection with the home-based service business on the premises or within the layout of the street. And that's the second, that's the second prohibition of...
But then it says except for normal business activities, and that's what he's trying to do.
Where?
Right?
I don't see that. That's, I don't see that in this.
Right, at the end of that sentence. That the business premises has frontage, except normal business activities in connection with providing services to a customer. I think that's what he's trying to do.
So we have, we definitely have some concerns, the way that this article's written. I guess, Mark, can we yield to Mr. Duffy and see what his comments and then Jerry's comments are, and then we can give the applicant some guidance, whether or not he may or may not want a continuance or not.
I need some guidance.
It's a tough one to read. It is.
It's a tough one to read, and, I mean, how many can we...
Modify.
Not modify, you know, turn to blind, whatever. I mean, you know, like I said, I have nine ticked off here, and I really just got to this this afternoon and went back and looked at this, and I had a short period of time. You know, I almost feel like I need some guidance from town council.
Then we shall get it.
I wish we had a town council here half the time, although we do have Frank. He's retired. He's retired.
So, Mr. Duffy, we heard Mr. Fineran's concerns. What's your concern?
I'm retired.
No, no. You're part of the board now. This is a board question.
You want a part-time job chucking wood?
Not retired for much yet.
If this goes to court, I'm not going to be the witness to testify. I have an agreement with the town council that the town council is going to be the town council, and I'm going to be a member of this board, and I don't intend to cross that line.
Perfect. So do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do.
All right, good.
Mr. Noonan, this may follow up on a couple of questions that have been asked by Mr. Fineran, but would you please describe the process that you go through to have logs delivered to your site? How many times a week are logs delivered? How is it delivered? What kind of truck do you use? How is the logs unloaded?
What I do is I take trees from J S K Tree, I believe is the name of their company is. They call me. They have logs that they can't chip. They give them to me. I cut them up in 16, 17, 18-inch pieces, and then I split them, and I stack them.
And all of the splitting, how long are these logs when they're delivered to your house?
10 feet.
And how do you unload that truck?
The gentleman that drives the truck for the tree company just backs into my backyard and puts them where I asked him to put them, where I'm going to stack them, where I stack the wood.
So the splitting, the cutting of the logs into firewood is something you do on the property?
Yes.
The splitting is done on the property? And you have no employees?
No.
Okay. Now, one of the provisions of the bylaw that Mr. Fineran referred to, for the record, it's 24162C, says no equipment or processes shall be used which create noise, vibration, fumes, odors, detectable off the lot. That means detectable by your neighbors. So I'm going to ask you to inform us what provisions exist at this time for screening to prevent these noises from being heard by your neighbors or anybody in the neighborhood. I know you have a fence. Whether or not that actually prevents the noise from being detected off the lot, I don't know, but I'd like you to tell us what you do.
I've never had a complaint for noise. All three of my neighbors that are abutting to me have never, they're friendly. I talk to them all the time. They're my neighbors, and they don't have a problem with it. I don't, it's not like I'm going eight hours a day. I do other stuff. I transport stuff to Martha's Vineyard. I do construction. I do a lot of different types of jobs, so it's, I'm not there all the time. You know, like I said, I run the chainsaw maybe four, five... I said, I run the chainsaw maybe four, five hours a week, and I spend maybe nine, 10 hours splitting, and that's it. I'm not there all the time. I'm back and forth from Martha's Vineyard transporting goods and wood. I also sell wood on Martha's Vineyard. That's how it all started off, so I wouldn't have to pay $300 for the boat, so I wasn't going over empty, so I'd sell wood on the vineyard. That way, my wife got to keep me at home, and I got to work, and I got to go to the vineyard and bring junk cars back and junk them. That's what it started off as. Then people in Falmouth kept stopping, I want to buy wood, I want to buy wood. And it went that direction. It's like anything I do, it just sort of grows like mold, you know what I mean? I don't know why, but it does. So then I got a letter stating, take the signs down, or a Gmail my ex-wife gave me. So I took the signs down, and I stopped doing business until I came here to town hall. I took a couple of cords of wood over to Martha's Vineyard. That was it. I just wanted to run the business legally. I thought I was, until my house burnt down, and then this all happened. And now I'm here to try to make this right. That's all. There is no, I wasn't trying to hide. Nobody around me is complaining. That's it. There isn't much more to it than that.
Is the trailer on the property your principal residence?
Until my new home is built, yes.
Okay. And then you move into that, and remove the trailer?
The insurance companies paid, I don't, I didn't even know I had that type of insurance. I was married, so I didn't know. All they did was pay. So now I learned a little bit.
Okay.
Any further questions?
No.
Jerry?
I'm satisfied. I think this is approvable with conditions.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody from the members here that would like to speak on behalf or in opposition? Seeing none, the board like to proceed?
Should we have some discussion? So if he wants to withdraw, he may not be aware of it.
I agree. Would you like to close, vote to close first, or?
If we have to.
You want to have discussion?
We want to discuss first.
You want to discuss?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jerry.
No, I think he needs the requirements. We went down one by one. We get about two or three down, and then all of a sudden, we go off track. I mean, I haven't heard one that hasn't been responded to by Noreen. It says this, it says that. Under three, it tells us, wait a minute, 240-162, F3A, it tells us the things we have to consider in our approval. And there are some elements of the same things Noreen has suggested. You know, storage of stuff, not in the sightline, things like that.
Where are you, where are you, F3A?
Three.
Oh, yeah.
In the following criteria. Well, that's, that's.
Demonstrates.
From my opinion, this is the criteria we have to apply to interpret the previous requirements.
Right. So it's directing you to, that he would need a special permit because of the size of his lot. So if his lot was over the 30,000 square feet, he could do this as a right, as long as he complied. But what the board, what the bylaw is directing you is that based on the size of his lot, they're directing him to gain a special permit according to these requirements.
But it says.
Then we can go on D3B, right?
Well, first off, it says, it demonstrates.
Hold on, Mark. Let's, Jerry.
You know, I think we got to go through this one by one, and then we get to another one that we've got this. Let's discuss it.
Well, before you go to another one, while we're on three.
Yep.
It says, may approve the application that demonstrates compliance with all the applicable requirements. I just don't see how that's happening. And I'm sorry, and I mean, I'm all for the guy doing his business. He's obviously a hard worker. I mean, I personally think that I need some weigh-in from town council. I mean, how many of these can we?
Again, I think with, this is here, you know, rather than going through this, I think we can approve it. If the board wants to continue it and get advice from town council, that may be another.
We may need a continuance. Okay. So Jerry, I understand your position. Mr. Duffy, what's your thoughts?
Well, I would just open by commenting that the home occupation provision in the zoning bylaw, and specifically the home-based service business, is kind of convoluted and difficult to apply. So I understand that we have a difficulty doing it. But I was looking at the bylaw, and I note that under the home-based service business provision of the bylaw, if you look at the definition of what a home-based service business is, it says it's a landscaping business, plumbing, electrical, or contractor, or mobile marine service, or other services not specifically listed. But if you look at the ones that are listed, landscaping, plumbing, electrical, contractor, and mobile marine business, the one common theme is that no work is performed on the lot. The work, they store materials and equipment on the lot. They load them up in the morning, they go somewhere else, and they do their work, and they come home at night. In this particular situation, what Mr. Noonan is doing is the reverse. He's doing all the work on the lot. So I think what he really has here is not a home-based service business, but a contractor's yard.
Well, they do, sorry to interrupt, but they do also allow, it says.
Yes.
Work in a screened-in area subject to provisions.
Yes. But I believe this, let me finish, please. I believe this is a contractor's yard. A contractor's yard is where work is, or fabrication work is done. Now, the splitting of logs, or the cutting of logs into firewood, and the splitting of them is akin, in my mind, to fabrication, and it's a contractor's yard. And that would mean that it's allowed in this district, which is an AGA district, but only on a three-acre lot, and no work can be done within 300 feet of a dwelling. So I think, I think he's in the wrong place, looking for the wrong thing.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I agree with Mark that we get council opinion.
And I also believe that there's more to this than, that you're prepared to, for us this evening, to move forward. I think it would be in your best interest to ask for a continuance, so that we can give you more time to address what you've heard here this evening. Sure. So that, again, I apologize on continuances, that's not what we'd like to do. We know that you want to get back to work. I just think that there's just too many open questions. So I'll let you make that decision. Noreen, when will we have time for Mr. Noonan?
So we would have to continue to February 2nd, but maybe it would be helpful if we could get an opinion from town council that would review the points and help us determine if this complies.
And you're comfortable with the questions you're asking down below?
Yeah, I don't see any reason why we can't provide them with, you know, what we've considered, right, and see if they can help.
And I think, Mr. Noonan, you might want to look at the two sections of the bylaw from your application.
I haven't even, never saw them, sir.
Yeah. I mean, I understand that, and you'll have time, but you should read, you should read through them yourself, so at least you'll be familiar with.
So if I just hand-split the wood, I'm good? I don't have a machine?
Well, I mean, the chainsaw part of it, see, I mean, and there's so many. And I mean, screened in.
I was stuck on noise, and I forgot about the chainsaw.
And.
So I can do it a sawzall and an ax, so I can have a business?
All right, let's not get that far.
I don't know. I'm just asking.
Well, I think you should start by reading through what you're asking us.
Okay, hold on.
Mr. Noonan, come grab this.
Thank you.
It might help.
Thank you very much.
Shall we continue it to February 2nd?
Whatever you'd like to do.
Does that sound?
Yeah, that's fine.
Is there a second?
A second.
Yep.
Hold those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, as far as town council, are we going to go about?
I'll send them an email and give them the information we have and see if they can help us resolve this. And if you can come back on February 2nd, we can hopefully get it.
Same time?
6:30.
Same time, 6:30?
Yep.
Just, he may not be familiar with that. The letter to town council is only for our review. Unless we vote to release it, he won't know what town council tells us.
He'll know.
Specifically.
He'll know the evening he gets here.
Say again?
He'll know the evening he gets here.
Well, I'll defer to what we can, what part of legal opinion we can discuss, because we've been told in the past unless, by town council, unless the board specifically votes to allow release of a legal attorney.
All right.
Does that mean that town council will be here on the 2nd as well?
No, I don't think that's the.
Send a letter.
No, they just send you a written opinion.
But I think, frankly, we could craft questions such that we get the answers to the issue raised by the.
Will they watch this portion of the meeting to see what questions we actually have?
Mr. Noonan, you might be able to also talk to the building commissioner to see if he can offer you some further advice.
Gary?
Yes.
I'll ask him. All set?
All right. So we are continued to February 2.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Have a good day.
Peace.
Do you want me to go get you?
I'll hand you the gavel.
That was quick.
You did a great job.
Next up, we have hearing 9922 McCarthy, 15 Ipswich Drive, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise the existing dwelling and rebuild exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures.
We have John and Andrea McCarthy, 15 Ipswich Drive, East Falmouth, applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section 24069E of the Code of Falmouth to raise the existing dwelling and rebuild exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures on subject property known as 15 Ipswich Drive. And let's see what we have for correspondence. We have no comment from the fire department, no comment from the assessors. Water. The proposed water line location must be added to the plan submitted with the water service application. The existing, the existing service is a 1-inch plastic, and if reused, should be verified to conform with the current Falmouth Utilities Division standards. The meter must be installed inside the house. Details for the water service must be included in the water service application. If the proposed water line is installed within 10 feet of any septic components, a detailed showing vertical and horizontal separation from the septic system, components that meet the Falmouth Utilities Division standards shall be provided with the application. Water, looks like con con. No, I think they, negative determination? Is that what I'm reading? Hold on.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And then we get to con con. There it is. And then we have engineering. The application was reviewed for impacts to the public rights away and public utilities. Ipswich Drive is a private right-of-way in this area. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. This project must not direct any stormwater runoff to the public property, abutters, or public right-of-way. Drywells are used for the roof, as we typically recommend. We recommend the following condition be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence. Erosion controls are shown on the plan. That was from engineering. Board of Health, let me make sure I have the right one. Board of Health, office would be considered the fifth bedroom with a four-bedroom septic system proposed. Suggest removing privacy by eliminating the door and placing a four-foot cased opening to the office. The proposed leach field will need to be 10 feet from the slab and crawl foundations, providing the crawl dust cap. Slab elevation is higher than the top elevation of the leach field. Full basement setback is 20 feet to the leaching. And that's all I have on that. And I don't know where my things went. Switch. Findings? Okay, go.
For the applicant, good evening.
Okay, good evening. My name is Pete Langen of Langen Contracting Services, right in Falmouth, and I'm here with Andrea and John McCarthy, the clients at 15 Ipswich. I'm here representing them on their property, 15 Ipswich Drive, in the community Seaco Shores. The McCarthy's are five generations of Seaco Shore property ownership, and the property was actually built by Andrea's dad in 1957. We're here tonight seeking a special permit for lot coverage exceeding 20%. I believe we have a fairly simple project that consists of raising the original house, construction of a new home on the lot. The new home will have full foundation with an attached garage. The home will have a, the new home will be a four-bedroom home with an approved septic system. The new structure is located in a flood zone, and we have received conservation approval with a negative determination on the RDA. We'll comply with all relating building codes relating to the flood zone construction. We meet all setback requirements. So really, the only thing we're looking for is relief regarding the lot coverage of 20%. And we know Seaco Shores, all the, almost every lot in there is pre-existing, non-conforming. I've been against, I was up in front of the board numerous times for the same thing of the over 20%. And we're looking for, we meet all the requirements, and we're looking for the board to make this approval so we can proceed. Any questions? And I can, I'd like to add on regarding the Board of Health comment. They did send that out regarding the office, and we did make the change. That did become a four-foot cased opening, and there is no closet. It was always labeled an office, so it isn't something we're trying to sneak in as a fifth bedroom. There was never an intention for that. So we did make the plan, and Ashley did receive the revised plan, and we did receive a comment back from Board of Health saying it was okay.
Questions from the boards. Mark?
You're sitting here this evening, and you witnessed our.
Staking policy?
Yes.
Yes. And everything, everything was staked.
No, sir. The front corners of the house are not staked.
The, every, I know, every single thing was staked. I don't know.
No, I went back again this afternoon just to double-check. There are no stakes for the front corners of the property, the back corners, the deck, all the stone, but there are no stakes in the front corner of the property.
All I can say, that somebody, neighborhood kids, somebody must have removed it, because I know specifically, they were, every point was staked. I'm not denying that maybe they're not there right now, but they were specifically there. And in this particular case, it's pretty evident where the lot corners are, and.
The corners of the house, the front.
Corners of the house, but even the corners of the lot. And like I said, I understand your position, but everything was, was clearly staked. I made sure of that. And the only thing I would ask, if they're not there now, that we could move on, only because I'm not looking for any special relief in regards to side yard setbacks. I think the site plan dictates pretty clearly, it's a square lot, well, square rectangle lot. So I think if there was any in particular parts to it that were in question, but I think it's pretty straightforward. But I do understand what you're saying, but I know for a fact, we did comply with every bit of it, and there was, you know, when it got staked, everything was there.
Well, the instructions in the application are pretty clear, and it states that they must be there seven days before, and they were not, and they still are not. And there's no way for us to determine where the front of the building is. And I mean, we go out there, and again, we're volunteers.
No, I.
I mean, and I went out there twice, and just like the others this evening, and we just have a lot of trouble with this, and it pretty much has to end. I mean, it's, it's all very explicit, right in the instructions.
I understand, and that's why it was done. So again, I did not. So it, again, I, I did not go out there and check. I think the last time I was out there was, was over a week ago. So again, I apologize for that, but we did do it. It was done. Again, I, I think where we do have a stamped engineered plan, and it's pretty clear what we're trying to do. Again, you know, if, if we were looking for something that I thought may be in question dictating those two front points, I mean, you even saw, you saw the rear stake, so we wouldn't have just staked the rear of the lot line. So I, I, I understand your position, but I, you know, all I can say is somebody must have removed the stakes.
Let me ask the board during site visits, did you encounter front staking in four corners?
I, I thought I saw them, but.
I didn't, no.
I went on Wednesday.
I, I saw the stakes in the rear. I don't think I saw the stakes in the front.
Jerry?
Nope. I think, well, the question is.
Well, it's gonna be a two-part question, is, is whether or not people are satisfied based on what they saw as the dimensions, or if we're going to continue this hearing.
How can you be satisfied for the, as to the dimensions if they're not staked out?
Well, the only thing I would, I would say to, the only thing I would say to that is, you know, when you, when you're dealing with an engineer, they have to, they stamp that plan, they put the stamp on it, they have to be within like two tenths of an inch over a mile. So when they put their stamp on it, that certifies, so that takes away all liability from you. I understand what you're looking for, but if there's stamps on it, and they certify that, you're covered. So I, I understand the, the visual aspect of it you can't do, but.
I can't do my job.
Well, you, if you look at the site plan, technically you could, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be.
Let me, let me ask what the position of the board is going to be. My, my recollection was, I was able to determine the lot, and I don't, not recall, I make a note when things are not staked properly, but I don't have any notes on my that it was not, and I'm not saying was or wasn't done. How would the board like to proceed, given the precedence with other hearings this evening regarding this issue?
Unfortunately, I, I, I mean, whoever did stake out, they staked out everything out back. I, the day that I was there about a week ago, there was nothing out front. I, I hate to say that somebody took it or did something. We hate continuations, but I, I didn't see any out front.
Did you?
I even wrote well-staked because there were so many stakes out in the back.
I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry. You're out of order. Thank you.
But I feel that it's hard to separate this from the other ones that we've done today.
So you're looking for a continuance?
Yeah.
Sir, please, thank you. Frank?
I went out to the lot, I saw the stakes in the back. I didn't see, I don't recall seeing the ones in the front. I didn't have any problem visualizing this project, and as the gentleman has referred to, I rely on the engineer's stamped plans for compliance with the zoning bylaw, although I'd like to see the stakes, but it wasn't fatal that I didn't.
Do you be looking to go forward this evening, or for continuance?
Well, I think we've got a little number of people. I would vote to go forward.
I can go forward too.
Jerry?
I'm not voting no, but I would vote to go. I would vote to go forward, considering we've got a stamped drawing, it's, as was.
All the others had a stamped drawing as well.
Okay. Would you be looking to vote no at this point, or looking for a continuation?
Continuation.
Okay.
At this point, sir, I think you have three votes in favor of going forward, two people I think are somewhat against. So I'll defer to you if you're gonna be asking for a continuation, given that you need four votes.
Well, no. So will, will three positive votes get it approved?
It would not, Jerry. That would be a denial, and you would have to change material.
Continue, please.
So unfortunately, it would also be February 2nd, because your January nineteenth meeting is just totally locked.
I don't know, Kevin's meeting was gonna be really long on the nineteenth.
Nineteenth, want to work for you?
Yeah, that would be great.
Is there a motion there?
Motion to continue to January nineteenth?
Seconded by Mark. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's a vote.
Thank you.
We're gonna need that staking meeting soon than we thought.
Our final hearing this evening on new hearings is application one oh one dash two two Schumway, one eighty-two Edgewater Drive, East, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the non-conforming single-family dwelling. Do you hear it? Ready?
Yeah, go.
You have to read it in.
That would be helpful, wouldn't it? All right, we have Eric and Mariana Schumway, fifty-seven Beach Glen Road, Roxbury, Mass, applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section two forty ten point two A and two forty eleven point three A four, formerly two forty three C and two forty six nine E of the Code of Falmouth, to raise and rebuild the non-conforming single-family dwelling on subject property at one eight two Edgewater Drive East. Yes. I've lost it. It's getting too late for me.
We're all, we're all.
We're all getting a little. Sorry. Assessors, this includes lot one A and parcel C. No comment from fire. Planning, no comment. Water. The proposed water service connection should be from the, should be from the six-inch AC main in Edgewater Drive East. The proposed water line location must be added to the plan submitted with the water, water service application. The existing service is a three-quarter inch copper water service, and it must be abandoned. The meter must be installed inside the house. Details for water service must be included in the water, water service application. If the proposed water line is installed within ten feet of any septic system components, a detail showing vertical and horizontal separation from septic system components that meet the Falmouth Utility Division standards and should be provided with the application. Then we have engineering. We have the application was reviewed for impacts to the public rights away and public utilities. Edgewater Drive East, East is a public right of way in this area. The proposed alterations will require filing a permit with the engineering division. We request that the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit with the engineering division prior to the closing of the hearing for this special permit, or that the board include the following condition of the special, if the special permit is approved. The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town departments. This project must not direct any stormwater runoff to the public property, abutters, or public rights away. Drywells are proposed for the roof, as we typically recommend. We recommend the following conditions be included. After completion of the construction, the applicant shall post the address. Where this project falls in the jurisdictions of the conservation commission, we defer to the commission for the stormwater management and construction erosion controls. Note that the plan shows a construction entrance and erosion controls across the front of the property along the town right of way. We will inspect and monitor in these controls as part of the driveway permit. That's engineering. Health. Health has no issues with this project based on the board of health's decision twelve nineteen, following a, allowing a four-bedroom septic system with a dentifying technology. The plan, the plan is approved by the BOH for a nitro system not shown on the plans attached with this referral request. The BOH had, in a previous meeting, advised a designer to look towards a better performing dentify, dentrifying technology, such as nitro.
De-nitrifying.
Thank you. I'm looking for help. That's from them. No comment from historical. And then I get into the septic. Concom. Concom is very long, I think.
Conditions in the file.
Right. Thank you.
Can you read all eighteen pages of that?
Yeah, it is all eighteen pages.
No, we're gonna move on.
And that's all, and that's all I have.
For the applicant, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here with Ahmed Clower Law Firm, and I am here before you tonight, representing Eric and Mariana Schumway, the owners of one eighty-two Edgewater Drive East. I'm also joined tonight by Elizabeth Katapovic from Cross Cape Architecture, who is the architect of record on this project. The applicants are seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling and structures on the property. This property, one eighty-two Edgewater Drive East, is located at approximately the midpoint of the Seaco Shores Peninsula. As this board knows, it's a dense residential, largely seasonal neighborhood. This particular lot is twelve thousand two hundred and sixty square feet. It's located in RC zoning district, and a good portion of the lot and a portion of the existing house is within the AE thirteen flood zone. Presently, there is a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a detached garage. Overall footprint is just over three thousand square feet. As it exists, there are a number of existing non-conformities. The detached garage is an accessory structure located in the front yard. The garage and the dwelling are both non-conforming to the side yard setback to the north, being six feet where ten feet is required. The dwelling is non-conforming to the rear yard setbacks to the waters of Vineyard Sound, being eight feet where fifty is required. And the lot coverage by structures is presently twenty-four point nine percent, where twenty is allowed by right and up to twenty-five by special permit. It's also non-conforming to the flood zone requirements. This dwelling was built in nineteen fifty-one and needs significant repairs and upgrades. Given its location in the flood zone and the scope of the work, the applicants are seeking to raise and reconstruct the building in order to comply with the flood zone requirements. Pursuant to the building code and FEMA regulations, this proposed structure will be done so that all habitable space and mechanicals are located at least one foot above the flood zone elevation. The proposed plans either eliminate or improve all of the existing non-conformities. The garage becomes part of the dwelling, therefore eliminating an accessory structure in the front yard. The non-conforming side yard setback to the north is eliminated, to both the dwelling and the garage, is proposed at eleven feet. The rear yard setback to the waters of Vineyard Sound is improved to thirty feet. Lot coverage by structure is reduced slightly down to twenty-four point five percent. But while that's also, that's a reduction of the, of the existing lot coverage, it's also an elimination of the non-conformity with the issuance of a special permit. The bedroom count does increase from three to four. The applicants, as noted in board of health referral, are installing a de-nitrification system, which has been approved by both the board of health and the conservation commission. The proposed ridge of this building is twenty-nine feet, which is well below the twenty-five, thirty-five allowed by right. And, and lastly, this proposal will comply with flood zone requirements. Despite the fact there's improvements all around on this project, we still do require a special permit under both two forty ten point two A and two forty eleven point three A four. I'm gonna stumble over those again and again, and I'm sorry, because I'm still not used to them, but those are formerly two forty three C and two forty sixty-nine E respectively. Under two forty ten point two A, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit, provided that this board finds it not substantially more detrimental than the current condition. Twelve point one E, which is formerly two sixteen. Impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, there's no new existing, there's no new non-conformity created. The existing, all existing non-conformities are either improved or eliminated. Looking at the requirements of two forty eleven point three A four, which is two forty sixty-nine E, the residential C zoning district allows for lot coverage by structure exceeding twenty percent if the board is, board considers and finds that the size and height of the structure in relation to the neighborhood, the effects of shadow, impacts on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen coastal abandments. In preparing the lot comparison worksheet, it appears that this house is and will remain among the larger in the area. However, I believe that the design of the house mitigates that greatly. I say this respectfully, with all due respect to my, my other projects, I think this is a very well-designed house, which was done in consideration for the area. The second floor of the, of the building is pulled back quite a bit from the front. It's pulled back on three sides. The building extends towards the rear and includes a walkout level on the bottom, which isn't visible from the street, so I think from the street, this presents very visually in character with the neighborhood. No impact of shadowing or views and vistas from public ways. There is an improvement over the existing conditions, only a minor increase in the roof height, and all the existing setbacks are improved. There is an improvement to the effect of nitrogen of coastal abandments. Though the number of bedrooms is increasing, the de-nitrification system will result in less effluent than present. This project represents a significant improvement over the existing conditions. As have noted, all existing non-conformities are either improved or eliminated. Lot coverage by structure is reduced, and it'll, is reduced and also eliminated as a non-conformity with the issuance of a special permit under two forty eleven point three A four. The rear, rear yard setback to the waters of Vineyard Sound is improved. The accessory structural barriers are eliminated. The side yard setback to the north is eliminated as a non-conformity, and again, it will comply with the flood zone requirements. There's no new dimensional non-conformities, there's no adverse effects, and certainly none that would overbalance the beneficial, the benefits that have already. There's nothing about this proposal that's substantially more detrimental than what exists. I believe that this more than meets the requirements of two forty ten point two A, eleven point three A four, and two forty twelve point one E. I would be happy to address any questions the board has, and if I can't, I'm happy to pass it over to Ms. Katapovic to see if we can't move this forward tonight.
Board questions, start with you Scott.
I don't have any.
Did you?
I don't either.
Mark?
Just the staking, and it was all good.
I, I'm sitting there going, I hope it's state.
But there are stakes with, like, red stripes and stakes with blue stripes. Can you answer what that, or the engineer?
I can't.
That's the first time I've ever seen.
I'd have to, I'd have to ask the engineer. I, I surmise, and I'm.
Something to do with the coastal.
I was gonna say, the coastal bank of the flood zone.
Yeah. I, I don't know which was which, though.
I, I don't know. I'm happy to ask that question just for our edification.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna ask anyway, because I, it's the first time I've ever seen them. And I agree with everything you said. I think this is a very nice design. I mean, it's, it's almost understated or whatever. But I, I do, what you say here that you eliminate the non-conformity, you actually don't eliminate it, you, you just have a special permit for it.
But with a special permit, it's no longer non-conforming. It's allowed by special permit. So, so it's no longer non-conforming at that point. A non-conformance is when you don't have allowance, you, when you're not allowed to do it. So in this case, if the board votes to approve it.
Yeah.
It, it would then, therefore, no longer be a non-conformity. It would be allowed by special permit.
But it'd still be a non.
It's sema, it's sema, it's semantics.
Yeah, it is a little, but I, I completely understand why you write it that way, but I don't have to hundred percent agree with it. But I a hundred percent agree with everything else you said. Think this is a nice, really a nice, a nice job and a nice design. If you mind, Schumway, that's not a very common name. Do you have any relatives?
She's the architect.
No, they, you're not the Schumways?
I'm Sherwood Maynor.
Oh. Because I knew, I grew up in Vermont, and I knew some Schumways there, and that's the only time I'd ever.
I'm happy to pass along the inquiry, though.
Whatever, but I don't know, I have no other questions, and like I said, this is nice.
Frank?
I have enough information.
Jerry?
No questions.
I'll just reiterate some of the sentiments. I think this is, it's checking off all the boxes I need in terms of production of non-conformities and IA systems and so on, and it's a very tasteful plan. I have no questions. Public comment? Richard?
We all want to go home, Jim.
Would the board like to close the hearing?
Yes, second.
Second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hearing is closed, no further testimony taken. Does the board need discussion, or is the board prepared to entertain a motion at this point?
We didn't have any discussion before. I don't see how we'll have any.
I'll make a motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
Findings?
All right, the findings. We're in an RC. It's overlay district Wacoit Bay, flood zone AE thirteen. No other special permits that I could see. Lot size is twelve two six oh. It's on a public road. Lot coverage today is twenty, well, no, twenty-four point nine. Structure twenty-seven point five complete, and it's going down to twenty-four point five structure and twenty-seven point two. The height is twenty-nine. They're doing the new system, they got an order of conditions. It's a, do you want me to recite all the two forty ten two A, two forty eleven three A four, formerly two forty three C and two forty six nine E?
That's easy for you to say.
Yeah, easy for me to say. And I think that's all I have here.
There was a lot comparison sheet. So in the file, testimony is, is in the top third for lot coverage. No objections at the hearing. There was nothing in the filed.
Nope. No letters. Nope. No letters.
One neighbor in support. Any other findings? Oh, the testimony is this will bring the property into FEMA compliance with flood zones. There will be a reduction or elimination of the existing nonconformities.
This is a good...
Not more detrimental. All right. Conditions? Per plants, per orders of Concom.
Per Concom?
Standard work hours.
The Board of Health with the septic?
Yep, Board of Health. No materials to remain out of the road. If not, just work with the police. Suitable arrangements.
No other structures.
It's a big lot. They can keep it all.
No other structures or anything that would cause lot coverage to increase. We'll take it back. 24.5, so no other structures. Anyone else? Conditions? Jerry, Frank, Mark?
No.
No.
Maureen? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience this evening.
We're going to get your time this evening.
That having excluded everything on the agenda this evening, I will ask Maureen, just reverting back to future agenda items, perhaps to float some potential dates on a Saturday to meet to discuss staking issues or any other else we'll put proper notice out.
Now Suzanne suggested, you know, I mean, that if we also combined on the same date, like perhaps met with the planning board later on, like us meet at a... I mean, at some point, we're going to have to meet with the planning board, right? Doesn't necessarily have to be at the same time, but if we did meet beforehand and had them afterwards, or whatever, I mean...
And topics for the planning board? Do you want to submit them so that we...
For me, it's the having the extra bedroom and pretending it's an office.
Just the recodification issues of specific issues that we've had.
Like that 1980 date. I just... You know, I know we just went through everything, but I don't see how that belongs there.
So Frank has been thinking on the recodification group, as well as Scott, myself, and there's a long way to go.[1713.51]